Okay, Roger that, Mr. Chairman, you were live.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Good evening, welcome to this Town of Henrietta Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. Members present, Robert Barley, Matt Borkowski, Patricia Brill, Craig Eckert, Walter List, Steve McIntyre, Town Staff Chris Martin, Director of Engineering and Planning, and Chris Hauser, Deputy Director of Engineering and Planning. First item on the agenda this evening will be the minutes from the April 19th, 2022 meeting. Any comments or questions on, on the minutes? Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Do I have a sufficient second, please?
Second.
Mr. Eckert, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And the Chair, the, oh, mister, yep, thank you, Mr. List, Mr. List abstains. The opinion of the Chair, the motion carries, we have approved minutes from April 19th. Also in attendance tonight, Planning Board Attorney Daniel Mestrela. Hello, Dan. Okay, the first application this evening is application number 22008 O'Connell Electric. This is for final site plan approval of a new two-story 21,000 square foot office building located at 390 Systems Road in an industrial zone district. Who's here representing the applicant, please? Yes. Good, thank you. If you gentlemen, see, do we have a sign up sheet? Is there a sign up sheet on the podium there? Oh, it's over there. Good, thank you. Okay. Nope, I just, I wanted to make sure it was out there. Thank you.
Director, my name is Jake Bellwiss, I'm with Army Group. My lot is not proper. We're, we're nine per plus, we're in area, it's mine. And 390 is the road. Twenty-one thousand square feet, but it's an hour and a half on its per se per form. The proposed building is located and it's primary used to be for on main and office. We're also requesting a pool for the, a smaller set back. So up here is right in the economy of that system road, it's very long here. So all traffic enters through the southwest of the property. The track, both, both around buildings. All this ash area, going to be asphalt or garden. All this area back here is currently private. Where the old building is primarily for storage of equipment and materials. Long, the north, north plus, the property there is certainly that it's small. Where it stays. You're showing eighty-six spaces in the area and then forty-two in the ground area.
Pardon me one second. I appreciate that you're pointing it out here, but can you grab a mic because we are recording this? And when you're away from that microphone, I don't think they can hear you, although we can. Sorry, I just noticed.
Um, so. Oh, yeah, so we got the, the paved parking that's in the center of the property. And that will be enough parking to satisfy the existing 25 employees that work in this building as well as the fifty-six offices that are going to be here. And that'll give four, five extra visitor parking. And then obviously for the, these land bake parking spaces are primarily going to be used for work trucks and possibly storage of the large lineman trucks. The dumpster enclosure is, as you can see, is up here. And I saw in one of your comments that I, I've read through that we need to put a detail on our plans. But that's going to be where the dumpster enclosure is going to be located. The generator in transformer, another comment that I saw that is going to be located in the south of the, of the proposed building. And that we will be asking our landscape architect to put some, some screening, some vegetative screening to the west side of it so that all traffic entering and exiting, primarily the office employees and visitors will not be able to see those, those two generators. Um, so the existing stormwater currently right here is a detention pond, a dry detention pond. And we will be replacing that with underground storage facility, which is roughly about one and a half times the storage that's currently there. And that will also have a sediment separator in line. So all of the proposed asphalt, or most of the proposed asphalt, the new proposed building and the asphalt up to the northwest will all be taken in by that separator and then put in the underground storage and then outletted through the existing pipe, the 24-inch pipe that's located along the, the south of the property. Water, it will be coming from the north, which is already an existing hydrant that is located on the property. So that we will be teeing off of and bringing right into the northeast corner of our proposed building. And we will be adding on our plans, the call out for the fire connection. Uh, sanit- sanitary, there is a pump station in the centrally located in the parking lot. That we are going to tie into and we are going to supply the, the town engineer with updated flow data and to make sure that, that existing pump will, or the, the new existing pump will take in all the additional flow. And then gas and electric will be coming from the west side of the property down the kind of main line of traffic into the building. A comment that I did see on, uh, from the, I believe it was the town engineer was flow traffic is going to be primarily around the land bake parking up into here. This is where they currently have their low boys drop off materials and equipment. And we'll come them back around. And that's why we have 45-foot spacing around, which should be more than ample for a fire truck, but we will get that on a plan on a, on our new, our final set will show a fire, fire truck auto turn around to show that we have plenty of space to get that around. Uh, the here of this is the insulated metal panels that is proposed for the entire exterior of, of the building and see the other, there'll be three primary, primary colors, which is the, the light tan, the darker gray, and then kind of a mid-gray. And as you can see in the rendering, there is some corrugation in those. We weren't able to, they didn't have an actual sample of that, but it's the same, same supply or the same concept with the insulation within side of it. Uh, we have received Conservation Board comments from their, or our May 3rd meeting. I will go into the landscaping plan here in just a second. That was a primary comments that they had. Uh, we've received Mineral County DRC comments, Town Engineer comments, Pure Water, Water Authority and the Department of Health. And nothing has, is major has come from those comments. Um, the total site disturbance is going to be less than an acre. And it might not seem like it from this drawing, but this portion is a already existing paved pavement and a probably 75% of where the asphalt is already stone. The only area that we are changing is going to be where the existing pond is. And that will be again taken out and put, uh, placed parking in. And then that will lead me to landscape plan. Um, so what you guys have seen in our, in our drawings was the primary landscaping around the building. We have added to get more green space. We've taken four spaces out and put in landscaping, which is going to be right where the light poles are going to be. And then we have also to get the 25% coverage of green space, we've added, it'll be topsoil and grass along the west, or sorry, east side of the proposed site. Um, and the last comment I had that I saw was, is the site going to be balanced? We are intending it to, to be balanced. Uh, that is why we picked the location for the underground storage facility because there's already a detention pond. So there's already a hole in the ground. So we're going to just kind of box that out, place our detention or underground facility right there. And uh, we are hoping, uh, the, the reality is we are going to have to take some soil from this top corner due to the grades on site. Gets pretty steep right here. So we've kind of found the middle ground of having the, the site as balanced as possible. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. So let me just clarify, you're looking to get a variance reduction from 62, 55 or 45, did you say?
Uh, 55.
55, okay.
Yeah, I misspoke there.
Yep, very good. Okay, the Chair will recognize Mr. Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Um, no, I think, uh, good fit. I am seeing a lot of perimeter storage around the existing site that's not shown on the plan. Is that going to stay or?
So, uh, because of our green, green space requirement, some of that is going to come in, the perimeter storage.
Okay.
But, um, some of the, uh, the trucks and materials will be going to their other off-site property.
Okay, and what about the southern property line?
Yeah, in regard to material or that will be.
Okay. Okay. I just don't know if it's wise to show for the fire, uh, that, you know, there's anticipated storage areas and they won't conflict. You know?
So that's just. And the nice thing with that is, well, they, they need access for that eighteen wheeler or low boy. So there will, there will always be access, but we can absolutely.
Right, good point. If they can get through the fire truck and get through, but might be wise for the fire marshal to see that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I see good screening to the north side, which is where the residential is, even we can infill with the trees that you have there in the landscaping, I see. Uh, are the trees that you have there coniferous? Are you planting evergreens on the north side? Because it looks like a lot of deciduous that's there now.
So these are existing, those were from a prior project, yeah, from, for their office expansion.
Yeah, okay.
These are all, um, existing.
Yeah, is it all deciduous though, or is there some conifer in there? Okay, it looks like a pretty good screening. So wasn't sure if that's what something else, they look proposed down there, those trees. So that's what I was.
Yep, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. Um, no, I see it as a good fit. It's already kind of a parking lot and you just need some more space. This is again, um, and I forgive me if I didn't hear this in the beginning, office, this all plant for office? Okay. No, and I'm, uh, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. The Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you guys moving your Victor location to this location or are you going to have both? Okay, very good. That was just for curiosity's sake. Did we address the relocation of the fuel station? Okay. The removal and relocation of the fuel station will need to be reviewed and approved by the fire marshal. I just wanted to make sure we are addressing that. You said everything's been reviewed and there would be really no problems, but I want to make sure I highlight the ones that stood out. Converting existing lights to LED to match any of the proposed lighting? Can you pull the mic up just a little bit?
Is that, there's a button at the base.
Right here.
Our exist, or the plan included in the package actually shows the existing lights on the building. They are existing LED and they will remain. The lighting in the parking lot is all new, so that will be new pole fixtures that are also shown on the lighting plan. Uh, and they will be LED.
So as this is listed, nothing needs to be converted?
Correct.
Okay, so that's incorrect. Thank you. The landscape details you address that detail, and that is oh, a couple more things regarding from the fire marshal. Recent visit to the site, I noticed there's only one hydrant on the property. Location needs to be more pronounced and revised on submitted plan, recent plan.
So the hydrant that they're speaking about with visibility to it. We are proposing our fire department connection.
Thank you. That's all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. The Chair will recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Uh, Jacob, that was very thorough. That's, that, uh, that's good to see. I, I just want to clarify, I know we already hit this twice, but on our notes, it says that the setback is going from 60 to 50, but on your site plan, it's showing 55. So 55 is the accurate number.
Yeah, we had shifted the, the building between those set of plans.
Gotcha, okay. I just want to make sure we had the right, right stuff here.
Yeah, we don't have any loading or unloading on the south side of the building.
Okay.
So per coded indicates you could do, do either 30 or, or 60.
Yeah, and for this, um, for this application, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with, with adjusting the setback. So I guess we would probably need to poll everybody and find out. Um, and the other thing I had was materials, you guys provided that, so I'm all good. Thank you.
Very good. Mrs. Brill and Mr. Eckert, may I get your opinions on the, uh, the setback?
I'm okay with it as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the Chair will recognize Mr. Barley. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, welcome. Is it Jacob or Jay?
Either or, doesn't matter. Jake, sure.
Um, I didn't catch, you said there was some land banking. How much land bank parking was there?
Uh, 42 spaces, I believe.
Correct, yes, 42 spaces.
And you mentioned there are 25 employees. Were any new employees coming into the building?
There's existing 25 and we're going to add about 56 employees.
All right, I'm, I'm okay with the setbacks also.
Very good.
Thank you, Chairman. I have no other questions. Thank you very much. The Chair will recognize Mr. List.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Um, I have no issues with the project in itself, but my question, I've just, for my own education, how long has this, how long have you been in this site on Systems Road?
2010.
10, and up to now, where, where has your office been up to now?
They have offices in Victor as well as 400 Systems Road to the south of this property.
What was at the site before you came in? That'll count.
Terry Tree.
A tree?
Terry, Terry Tree Services, yep.
Okay, so there's nothing underground here that's of a concern.
Not that we're aware.
Terry Tree, no chemicals.
No, not that we're aware.
Thank you. Setback.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. List. The Chair will recognize, excuse me, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
And for the record, I asked for a setback too.
Very good.
Um, the question I've had, have on regard to this is there appears to be like a little corridor at the eastern part of the property that goes over towards Brighton Henry at a town line road. Is that part of the parcel?
Yes, yeah, that is, that is the, they're per, per se their flag lot. That's their access to, to the main road, which is Brighton.
And will that be utilized at some point?
Nope. No intentions.
No intention.
Not now with this project.
Try to make connection to Brighton Henry Town Line Road.
Yeah, their main access is through easement out to Systems Road, which is off to the west. The part that you're referring to is a flag lot, which there's a great difference, uh, as well as access through, you know, Uncle Ben's storage area out to the front road.
Okay. Um, the other question I have is I know this is going to be a, an office building, but what are we doing? Does O'Connell, um, bring on site, use transformers or damage transformers? And the reason I'm asking is the older transformers have oil that's PCB in it. Do you have a process for dealing with those?
Mr. Camping answered to that.
Um, we don't, our, we don't have transformers per se. Our customers always own those transformers. And because they're containing PCBs, many of the older generation ones, we always leave them behind on the customer property. Because once we take possession of them, then basically we own them and are responsible for taking the oil out, having it cleaned. And there's, there's a process for that, but it's very costly. So it's a customer's transformer. When it gets removed, it gets left on site, you put new current technology transformers in place. It's just a problem we've dealt with for many years and have got it under control where we don't any longer bring any old oil or any old transformers back because literally through history, we've inherited that problem. And it's cost us to properly dispose of it. We ended up with those costs instead of the customer who generated that, that the old transformer in the first place. So it's a long way to answer your question, but no, there will not be any.
So basically on this site, there's no recycling of dangers.
That is correct.
That is correct. That's good for me. Uh, did you bring any building, uh, materials or samples or anything? Could I ask me to get that?
Building consists of three color samples that we're handing out to you guys. Names are listed on the back.
Metal, metal clad.
Metal clad.
CMU.
Metal clad, insulated.
I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any comments, uh, Mr. Martin? Mr. Hauser from Town Staff at all?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I will do a seeker, but I think, um, let's see, do I need to do the seeker before I do the motion, Dan?
You should do this.
Okay, very good. Yep. Okay, seeker review indicates the action under consideration is an unlisted action as per section 617.7 C1VIIII. The Henrietta Planning Board as lead agency has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required. The action under consideration is a site plan application by O'Connell Electric Company. It is an unlisted action and will not require a conditioned negative declaration. The purpose of this application is for final site plan approval of a new two-story 21,000 square foot office building located at 390 Systems Road in an industrial zoned district. All relevant areas of environmental concern were identified. Evaluation and examination were carefully made in relation of the existing conditions versus the proposed site improvements. It has been determined that there will be no adverse environmental effect as a result of the proposed action. I James Gruner mental effect as a result of the proposed action. I James Gruner therefore make the motion that we make a negative declaration and that the Chairman be authorized to sign the statement of environmental significance. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Barley, thank you.
Who got that?
Mr. Barley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Very good. Depending on the Chair, we have, uh, the motion is approved. We have seeker. The Chair will make a motion to, um, formally revise the setback from where'd my notes go?
60 to 55.
Thank you, 60 to 55 feet.
Should the wording be no less than 55?
I'm sorry.
No less than 55 is the wording we usually do?
Uh, that's fine.
From 60 to no less than 55 feet. Okay.
Well, then they can go 61, 62, 63, 64.
Correct.
They could, yes.
I'm sorry. No less than.
55.
55. It can't be 54.
Okay, so the Chair made the motion. Do I have a sufficient second on this motion, please?
Second.
Mr. Borkowski, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The opinion of the Chair, the eyes have it. We have the revised setback, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve application number 22008 O'Connell Electric Office Building.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Do I have a sufficient second, please?
Second.
You go ahead.
Mr. List. Thank you. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The opinion of the Chair, the eyes have it. The motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir. Oh, thank you. For the record, the Chair wants to acknowledge the attendance of Councilwoman Sefernick. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda this evening is application number 22009 Tesla Motors for final site plan approval for the partial demolition and modification of the existing building for a new automotive, automotive service center, educational gallery and vehicle display located at 3535 West Henrietta Road in a commercial B1 zoned district with a mixed use redevelopment overlay district. Who's here representing the applicant, please?
Uh, good evening. Uh, thank you for having me. My name is Michael Rem.
Hi, Michael.
With the applicant team. I'm also joined, uh, by Rob Truitt, uh, also from the applicant team, John from Arc Vision, uh, the architect, uh, and also John, uh, from the civil engineering firm. Um, I want to thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board for your time and your patience tonight. Tonight, uh, as you mentioned, uh, here seeking final, uh, site plan approval for our project at 3535 West Henrietta Road. And I believe we prepared a presentation that's been loaded on the computer.
Very good.
And I'm not sure if it's, uh, can you guys see it?
He's, he's working on it. Yep.
There we are. Uh, so on page, on slide two, you can see, uh, again, as you mentioned, the property is located in a commercial B1 zoning district. It's the current home of York Furniture. Uh, and West Henrietta Road, uh, as I'm sure you know, is home to many automotive uses. I've kind of listed them non-exhaustively here. Um, and pursuant to the special use permit previously issued by the town, we aim to redevelop the property, uh, to be leased to Tesla Motors. On the third slide, a quick history of, uh, the proposed project. In February, uh, we sought and obtained a special use permit from the Town of Henrietta. Uh, in April, we acquired the pop property from York Furniture. And two weeks ago, uh, we were here present at the Conservation Board meeting. Um, in the future, York Furniture will continue to operate the business until about the middle of July, when the renovation is scheduled to begin. Uh, the pro, the renovation project will consist of a number of different components that I'll go into a bit more detail. Uh, the pro, the renovation project will consist of a number of different components that I'll go into a bit more detail shortly. Or how about now? Uh, on the next slide, you'll see, uh, the existing property is actually two separate buildings that are connected. And we plan to demolish the front portion, uh, the front twenty thousand square feet, uh, which is the entirety of the front building. Uh, we're doing that to right-size the existing property for the tenant to be, uh, and to provide additional parking. Total disturbance for this operation and for this project will be less than one acre. On the next slide, you'll see the rear building, which will be renovated both on the interior and the exterior to, uh, new class A standards to be used as an automotive service center with a vehicle and educational gallery by Tesla Motors. On the next slide, zooming in on that renovation portion, on the renovated portion, you can see there's a, uh, public facing gallery, uh, in the front, which, uh, would, would feel very similar to, uh, automotive dealership. And in the rear, there is an employees only, uh, service area to be used to service vehicles. On the next slide, uh, you'll see the, uh, exterior of the building, a before and after. Um, and the project will be, uh, renovated, uh, including new, uh, glass storefront in the center and glass roll-up doors on, on both sides. Uh, the center will be a, a new addition, uh, there will additionally be new metal panel added to the building to, uh, kind of draw attention to the center and the pedestrian entrance uh, for, uh, for customers. The colors, uh, the color scheme, uh, is listed there on the right side of the screen. And those are the, um, uh, I believe the Sherwin-Williams, uh, standard color names for the colors listed. Uh, on the next slide, you'll see the parking lot will be, uh, upgraded with new, uh, planting. Um, and uh, on the next slide, you'll see, uh, I've just prepared a, a brief summary of a selection of the planting palette. But notably in the center, we will no longer be using a dwarf purple osier willow uh, at the suggestion of the conservation board, uh, two weeks ago. On the next slide, you'll see the site lighting, uh, will be upgraded and added. Uh, it will be LED and type, and notably they will have nighttime energy controls, uh, be cut off in style and be dark, dark sky compliant. On the next slide, you'll see vehicle carrier trucks will be able to access the rear of the property. No loading or unloading will be done in the public right away. Uh, and on the next slide, you'll see, uh, a list of comments two weeks ago that we received from the conservation board. I will kind of spare you the detail of each and every one, but we anticipate being able to comply with them all. Um, and I'll also add, uh, that last week and earlier this week, we received more comments um, from the development review, uh, committee, uh, as well as the town engineer. And we've been through those at a cursory level, and we also believe we'll be able to comply with all of those as well. Um, if we do have any, uh, feedback or questions or comments, um, we won't hesitate to reach out to get, uh, clarity um, or to, um, or to, um, uh, ensure that our, our project can meet the standards, um, uh, proposed by, or, or required by the town. Uh, I'll end with a pair of renderings. Uh, the first shows, uh, the property from the south. This shows a typical approach of a, of a customer or visitor to the building, uh, as they're pulling into the parking lot. And then the last image, uh, in the presentation shows a similar view, uh, but from the north. And this shows, uh, what you might see entering the building or, uh, bless you, uh, or, uh, leaving the property, uh, in your car. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Chair will recognize Mr. List.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Um, I really look forward to seeing this, uh, in place of the York Furniture Gallery. Uh, everything looks good to me, just as long as you comply with, uh, the comments from, uh, Chris Martin. And one about the one that I thought what was interesting, the tire storage area. Are you, you're going to supply more information about how the tires will be stored?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You anticipate how many tires?
Uh, it would, i- it's not planned to be a kind of tire, uh, heavy, uh, you know, service area. It would be typical of a, of a normal vehicle service center.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. List. Chair will recognize Mr. Barley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Hi, Michael. Um, will you be selling vehicles from this site?
Uh, no, sir. This is no.
So what will you be doing from this site?
Uh, this site will be a veh- vehicle display and education gallery. Uh, pursuant to the special use permit issued in February, there is some, uh, strict, uh, state legislation surrounding sale of, of auto, of autos or dealerships. And, uh, the use of this property will comply with that special use permit and New York State law.
So if I come to this site, I go to showroom and I want to buy a car, what do I do?
Uh, well, uh, truthfully, I would, I would, um, defer to the tenant on their, on the, on the conduct of their business. Um, first and foremost, I would say that, uh, all of the conduct at the project, uh, or at the property when complete will be uh, compliant with New York State law. Um, secondly, if I were to, um, kind of hazard a, uh, a, um, uh, a hypothesis of what would happen is you would be, uh, greeted by a Tesla employee. You would be shown a vehicle that you could be interested in purchasing. Uh, you could, um, uh, you, you know, review selections available for your customization. Um, and then you'd be given instructions in order to carry out on your own, uh, to complete the purchase of a vehicle.
How many charging stations will be on this?
I believe there are ten charging stations on the north side of the property for employee use.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other questions.
You're welcome, Mr. Barley. Chair will recognize Mr. Borowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you mentioned in the slide that you, you know, comprehensively, you could take care of all the conservation work. Did you get, um, did you get notes from the engineer?
Uh, we did, yes. I received them, um, kind of much more recently than the conservation board, uh, notes. We haven't reviewed them in detail, but we have reviewed them cursorily and we believe we can comply with them.
Okay, yeah, that's what I want to know. Um, that's it. As I, you know, this is a cool project. I think there's been a lot of buzz about it, so I'm kind of excited to see it come in here. And, um, I didn't see anything that stood out with the other note, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Borowski. Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
It's interesting, there's not going to be any sales of the vehicles from that location. I was surprised when you asked that question and then that was your answer.
If I could enter into that, just because of the scoreboard correspondence, they have a different model. It's an education process versus a car sale process. It's something that's working through with the DMV and that's why I was going through. We went through it quite a bit with the, you know, they have initial showroom now up behind, uh, Applebee's, the old, uh, Dunn Tire.
So that's moving from there.
That's just right.
So it's the same kind of thing. Okay. Do you, you were at the, the conservation board meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
What was the reason they gave about the dwarf purple osier willow?
So it's an invasive species in New York State.
It is too. I can attest to that. It's crazy. It's so beautiful if it's maintained correctly, but it does take a lot of maintenance. And I have everything else checked out, so thank you for that. I appreciate your detailed presentation.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Chair will recognize Mr. Record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
A couple of questions that I have, um, uh, the facade that we're looking at here. Was there a more detail as to what those materials were? Am I looking at a metal panel on the light gray? What's the dark gray?
Uh, the dark gray is a, uh, painted and, and resurfaced, uh, existing CMU block.
So it's just painting on the CMU?
That's correct.
There's no surface treatment to that?
Um, in the existing, uh, this wall is currently an interior wall. Um, so we do anticipate that, uh, there will be some kind of upgrade and renovation required to make it suitable for exterior use again. And it's my, uh, uh, expectation that there will be some resurfacing required in order to, to meet that requirement.
Yeah, okay, because it, yeah, at least an EFS or something would help give it some a little bit better facade, I would think to that. Uh, lights, I didn't, uh, get a chance to go through Mr. Martin's comments on the lighting plan. I see a lot of light throw off the property to the north and south. Was that a comment, Chris, that we had already looked at?
So obviously, um, our code is you can't have more than one foot candle across the property. So that's something that if it is, if you may, shields on the back of the lights or the
These are, these are facing left, right, not up, down.
Understood. We can, will comply.
Okay. Charges, charges are only for employee use?
That's my understanding, yes.
That could have any extras for Tesla owners?
Uh, at the moment, that's not the plan.
Okay. Um, the only thing I have is, um, walking the site, uh, there's a good amount of debris on the backside. I don't know if it's on the slope to the railroad track or not. Not sure if that's something that can be cleaned up either prior to a sale, if it's still York Furniture. That's something they can deal with before you guys move in, or if that's something you'd be willing to clean up and might want to take a look and see what it is.
Yeah, so I guess I'll say, I'll say two things. If it's on our property, um, you know, we'll certainly take a look at, at cleaning it up. Uh, if it's off of our property, um, you know, I, I want to make sure that we don't, um, kind of get into a, uh, a situation of, of, uh, you know, touching someone else's property.
Right. Yeah, I understand that somebody, at least at some point, had gone back there and illegally dumped. I believe it's just tires, but I'm not sure what else it is. I've had the railroad company is cleaning up their part. And so again, I'm not sure if they're going to claim that's their property or your property, so I'm not sure if that's something you want to deal with before you take over or not.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that, um, uh, helpful suggestion.
Yeah, well, and that's all the comments I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Record.
Thank you.
Chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Um, the question I've got regarding the, uh, you said this is not going to be a sales facility per se, right?
That's correct.
But it will be a service facility.
That's correct.
When they have an issue with the car, are better, are the batteries involved is a, like a normal service problem if they have?
Um, I suppose so, yes.
Um, these are lithium ion batteries?
The way they operate.
You just state your name for the record.
Uh, John Walberg with Arc Vision Architects. The way they operate with batteries is they will only ship a battery to the site when there's a car that needs it replaced. They don't store extra batteries in these facilities. They have separate facilities elsewhere where they might, which are designed to store the batteries. So if they have a car that comes in, they'll know ahead of time that it needs a battery replaced and they'll have it shipped so it can be installed the day that it arrives on site. So there's no storage of batteries.
All right, so that's, yeah, that's where it's kind of leading.
Yeah.
To, these are lithium ion.
Correct.
They have been known to catch fire. Uh, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have a building there that was going to store a bunch of these batteries.
No, there shouldn't be storage. They'll have them in there for a short time. They'll put them in a car and get them back out, out the door.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The bad batteries, uh, I'm, I can't speak completely knowledgeable about what they do with them, but they do ship them out to another facility. They won't keep them at the, the site for long at all. Yep.
Sorry, um, you're also going to have a oil separator necessary, required for the, uh, service?
That's correct.
Okay, and you, for your pride, engineering with those calculations for the size of?
We've already been provided with the town standard details and we will, uh, utilize them.
Chris, looking good.
Oh, we haven't seen them yet, but I'm sure they will be.
Okay. That is required for the particular, uh, service bay. The wall, the, uh, building and the lights, those are going to be wall pack lighting, right? They don't have a detail on those, but are those going to be full cutoff wall pack lights?
Hmm, I'll admit, I'm not sure of the detail, but we can, um, uh, we can, uh, clarify them on the plans when they're submitted for, uh, building permit and make sure that they comply with the town's requirements.
And I think today I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Any comments from town staff at all? Okay. Okay, so I'll do it now. Seeker review indicates the action under consideration is an unlisted action as per section six one seven point seven C one V I I. The Henrietta Planning Board as lead agency has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be required. The action under consideration is a site plan application by JBL Development. It is an unlisted action and will not require a conditioned negative declaration. The purpose of this application is for final site plan approval for the partial demolition and modification of the existing building for a new automotive service center, educational gallery and vehicle display located at thirty-five thirty-five West Henrietta Road in a commercial B one zoned district with a mixed use redevelopment overlay district. All relevant areas of environmental concern were identified. Evaluation and examination were carefully made in relation of the existing conditions versus the proposed site improvements. It has been determined that there will be no adverse environmental effect as a result of the proposed action. I James Gruner therefore make the motion that we make a negative declaration and that the chairman be authorized to sign the, uh, the statement of environmental significance. Do I have a sufficient second, please? Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Depending the chair, the eyes have it. We have seeker. Chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like for just a quick discussion. Uh, I think I'd like to make a little bit more of a point on the architectural facade. If that CMU can have be treated with something else and just painted, through a way to request that instead of um, just a painting to that CMU to the outside. That's not a facade treatment. An EFS, a spray coat, something else besides a, what would be a painted CMU, which I think would, would not look good. In my own opinion. So that's something that is
Just a front facade?
Yeah.
What are you looking for, right?
Not just a front.
Norse, right?
Said, no problem.
Are you, you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. A alteration to the front facade in the dark gray to be more than just a painted CMU. Request. All right.
Are you putting, putting in a motion?
Yep. Want to make that part of the, a condition?
That, okay. Well, I wanted to make it, uh, I wanted to do more than just ask about it. I think I was asking if it could be something else and I wanted to make sure that that was clear. So.
So we're just, for the record, the applicant has approved, um, that stipulation.
So rather than just more than just painted, why do you need to be a little more specific on that? Let's say, um, such as.
Is it going to determine based on what you find when you take the, the rest of it down? You'll have to see what condition it's in and then you can decide what other than paint you would do, is that?
I think that makes sense, yes.
Okay.
But truthfully, we, we have no issue with it. We'll, we'll, we'll comply with the intent.
Yeah, you know, whether it's an EFS or a spray coat or, or something that's sufficient to hide a little bit of the, the CMU texture, I guess.
Can you just make it, um, conditional on administrative approval from engineering?
Great.
That's the easier way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so do you want to restate your motion then, Mr. Record?
Um, no, that's why I'll present a motion based off that stipulation.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Borowski, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Depending the chair, the eyes have it. The motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It'll be a nice change to that site.
Mike, can I ask one question, since this has been approved? How long will it take for this to, uh, be finished and you guys to move in? Are you anticipating?
Um, we think the construction will take less than a year.
Less than a year?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, next item on our agenda this evening is application number C two-two dash zero zero two Splash Car Wash Incorporated. This is a conceptual review of a proposed car wash at the location of a former restaurant located at nine thirty-five Jefferson Road. That's the old Bar Louie, I think, right?
Right.
Coco's Carousel.
In a commercial.
Old.
Oh, that's going back, Mr. Martin. What'd you say?
Coco's Carousel.
Oh, Coco.
There's a steakhouse there too at one time.
Yeah, bugaboo, bugaboo.
Right. Yeah, oh, prior to that.
Yes. Those born before the forties know its character.
My brother was right there.
It wasn't arrow.
At the steakhouse? So this is going to be a lot different than what's been there. So the floor is yours.
That's right.
Interested to hear your concept.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Cade Krieger with DDS Engineers at forty-five Hendrix Road, West Henrietta, New York. Also with me here tonight is Jeff Arnold with Splash Inc., um, who is the developer. We're here to, tonight to introduce our project to the board and at a concept level and just get some feedback prior to making a formal submission for site plan approval. Um, the developer is proposing to build a new car wash facility, as you said, at nine thirty-five Jefferson Road at the site of the former Bar Louie and other businesses. And the project site is a one point nine acre parcel zone, commercial B one. Um, the disturbance will be over an acre, so we will need a swift for this project and stormwater management. Um, the project will consist of demolition of the existing building and hardscapes and construction. and construction of a new, uh, plus or minus fifty three hundred square foot car wash tunnel building on the eastern portion of the site. In addition, the project will include new concrete pavement landscaping and lighting. Um, as far as the drainage, the existing drainage generally flows in all directions from the current building to onsite drainage structures that tie directly into the municipal storm sewer system. Um, as we go into more detailed engineering, we'll be intercepting that stormwater for detention and making sure that we're, um, reducing or meeting the current, um, peak discharge rates from the site. Um, ingress to the site will be provided via the existing curb cut, um, from Clay Road. Egress from the site will be provided primarily by a right only exit onto Jefferson as well as a left right turn onto Clay from the, um, vacuum area, which is in the center. Um, an escape lane is proposed. Um, when you get past the three pay gates there, and I'll go through site circulation and how that works in a little more detail. But there is an escape lane proposed there. If anyone, uh, wants to get off site and not go through the back area, this would require an access easement to the neighboring property. So that's still pending and something that we're kind of workshopping at the moment. Um, the facility is intending to utilize existing water and sanitary services. We'll just cut those, tie back in. Um, we'll provide sizing and, um, more detailed calculations in our engineers' report as we submit for, um, site plan. Um, a car wash facility does require a special use permit in the commercial B one zoning district. Uh, we applied for and were granted the special use permit, um, at the May eleventh Town Board for this project. Um, we've received, um, initial comments from engineering and planning and will continue to, uh, work through those and get those addressed prior to submitting. Um, one comment that I saw was to change up the rear setback to be the south property line, which would be sixty feet. Right now, we need, um, forty eight, we need to be within forty eight feet of that property line. So we would be asking for a, a variance for the rear setback from sixty to forty eight because there's no loading or unloading, um, going on there. I believe the code, um, provides for that to be reduced down to thirty feet. Uh, I do have some architectural run rings that I'd like to pass around just to, um, for the board to get kind of a first, um, look at what it may look like. This is also under development and, um, it'll likely be slightly different. But I'll pass those out now.
Thank you.
Can you stop here? Thanks. Make sure I can read it.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
And the building materials, we do have some samples here too that we could, um, let you take a look at. All their facilities, the, the primary materials that they're using are cultured stone facade composite, uh, paneling and metal roof. It's generally a blue metal roof is the look that, um, Splash is going for.
Just fine.
You can just set it up by the table there. Sure, that's fine. Thank you.
So I, I can go over the site circulation a little bit and how it works, the business model. Um, Splash's business model is they're, they want to maximize the number of vacuum spaces that they have. They feel that these bring in more customers and the vacuums are free to patrons. So it's a service that they provide. And, um, when you have a membership or you pay for a car wash, then you can access the vacuum area. If you don't want a car wash, there's an escape lane to go straight to the vacuums, or you can go through the tunnel and go to the vacuum area. The vacuum areas use high technology vacuums. It's not the old, um, with a, you know, a, um, loud motor at each station. It's a single motor, services an entire row of vacuums. They're generally forty five to seventy five horsepower Vacutec motors with silencers on them. Um, we have, um, sound reading reports that we can provide to engineering and planning or the board. They're generally thirty eight decibels at thirty feet out, so they're very quiet. So each row of, um, back spaces, which are these spaces, um, each row would have a vac motor somewhere on site, generally a five by ten concrete pad that the motor sits on and that provides the power for the entire row of vacuums. Then each space has a overhead stanchion with a hose on each side. So when you pull into a vacuum space, you have a hose on each side of the vehicle to utilize. Um, so the, the thought here is that the vacuums are a free service for patrons. They really don't want people coming in and just using vacuums and leaving and not paying for a car wash. In theory, they could do that. So that's why we try to situate that after the pay gates.
The pay gates.
What are you calling them?
So, so those are the pay gates where you would stop and, um, the site is fully attended. There's always an attendant there to help patrons um, pay for a wash if they need to get out. The escape is generally coned off to discourage people from using that regularly and a tenant would move the cones, let them out, open the gates. They have remote controlled gates they can open at any time. Um, and then there, there's generally two, uh, attendants for the tunnel. Another, um, cool thing about the technology that Splash is using in these new facilities is they're eliminating the pre-wash where someone stands out front with a, a power washer and you get all this, you know, the soapy dirty water draining out the front of the tunnel. That's got to be dealt with. They use high pressure, um, pellet pre-wash systems in the tunnel. More in the center of the tunnel that eliminates the need for that. Um, there was a comment from uh, building and, and, and fire prevention about the, um, fire escape lane. Um, I, and what they said was they don't think an emergency vehicle would be able to utilize that if there's a bunch of cars stacked up. Um, and I understand the thought there. Um, our thought is that if a call were placed for emergency services, by the time they got there, an attendant would have remote controlled all the gates open and start clearing cars out and they would just get people off site. You, you're not going to want cars sitting there if there's a fire or another emergency. So, um, maybe there's some room for discussion there. Um, if not, we'll look at, um, widening that ingress egress on, onto Clay Road. Um, Jeff, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about the technology that, that you guys use?
Uh, if you don't mind, can I, may I take this? Thank you. Jeff Arnold, Splash Car Wash. Uh, forgive me for my dress. I went, I, I got tied up on a project today and to get time to get home and get changed and shower and so forth. So, um, forgive me for that. Um, Ben, in the car wash business for twenty two years, we started our first car wash in Clifton Springs, uh, twenty two years ago. It was just a little one bay automatic with three self-serve in bay automatic. It was kind of an existing car wash that we renovated and, uh, today with the combination of the, the roughly twenty five sites that we brought to the table and the ones that Splash brought to the table, we kind of combined all our operations, being a neighbor of about fifty plus car washes now. Uh, basically from Connecticut to Buffalo to Watertown to the Pennsylvania border. The goal of, um, of the industry is obviously to have is kind of the, fill the, the points of a puzzle. So as you have an unlimited membership, no matter where, where, where you are, whether in Connecticut or Watertown or New York City, your membership pass will work pretty much everywhere, right? You'll pay your, your base, your twenty dollars a month and wherever you are with your dirty car. Um, and that's kind of the goal of, of our operations with, with Splash Car Wash. You know, I, as mentioned in the, the town board meeting, there was a question about how are we different than some of the, the other car washes? Uh, again, we've been in business around the Rochester for a long time. We were classy chassis car wash. Um, and I think it's a, an evolving business, right? We're always changing and learning and growing. Um, and the one thing that's become the trend over the last probably seven, eight years is the tunnel type washes with unlimited wash passes and free vacuum centers. So we're just, I say we're different in that, you know, we're kind of a hands-on company. My business partner and Dave and myself are still actively involved in the business. Um, we try to use the most state-of-the-art equipment, bar none, in the industry inside the building. Uh, our vacuums are the most state-of-the-art vacuums out there. They're Vacutec. They're the, what would be the Mercedes Benz Ferrari vacuum systems are the, the most expensive, but they are the best too. Um, we had people come to the site to hear how they sound and ask us when we're going to turn it on and they're basically standing ten feet away and we said, they're running. Um, we used to have cancer vacuums at all our vacuums. You know, you had, you pulled in and we had those little monuments and we had two vacuums on each one and each of those vacuums puts out about ninety to a hundred decibels, right? So you're just standing there, you're, you can't hear your music playing. If you wanted to, everybody's cranking their music up. So we now take a vacuum system that puts out about thirty decibels and it controls ten vacuums and it's, you know, virtually silent. It's quieter than I'm talking right, right here. Um, and it's comfortable when you're standing there vacuuming your car. You're not hearing all the noise and you know, the central vacuum like your home, the, the canister's down in your basement, around in the garage and you're vacuuming and if you don't have the beater bar going, it's, it's pretty virtually silent. And that's kind of the goal of the industry is make it better, more environmentally friendly. Uh, preferred by towns, but really preferred by customers too. Um, no longer is a day where there's, we love the, the loud music being cranked. I mean, we, we have several tenants that'll be just monitoring the site, cleaning up, picking up, taking care of it at the pay stations, greeting customers, but the day when the, the person came in and turned the volume up on their stereo super loud and you could hear from, you know, ten roads away, goes away, by the way, we attend to these car washes because nobody wants to come there and be drawn up by somebody else's music. So obviously there'll be people playing some music on their cars, but we control the volume of that. We, we try to maintain, uh, you know, if you've seen our new Geneva site or any of our sites, we bought the Buckman sites, they're all going to renovate and and tremendous upgrades at all the Buckman sites, uh, the Melco site out in Penfield or some of the other acquisitions. But the goal is to, to make it so you enjoy coming to Splash Car Wash, that when you leave your cars clean and that there's virtually no wait in time. Uh, the industry is no longer, the customers no longer want to pull in and sit there and wait twenty minutes for a car wash, right? It's a fast-paced society. Everybody's on a rush. Everybody's in a hurry. So you're going to come in and we're going to get you right through, we're going to process you quick without a lot of prepping. We put very elaborate, very, um, advanced uh, prepping systems, as Cade, uh, talked about. It's fifty feet inside the wash bay. So we're no longer having contaminated water, soap solutions, as you said, most all of the car washes going out into the streams into wherever it is. We're going to entrap it inside and we're going to do a better job prepping the car than any human being could ever come close to prepping that car. Um, when the car comes out, it's going to be very clean. Um, and the customer, if they want a vacuum, they can come around and they can vacuum at no charge with the state of their vacuums. If a customer's a member and they come in, they don't want to get washed, they simply come through the pay gate, their, their, their license plate reader, we've now gone to, we don't even have tags on cars. It's just all LPR recognition, license plate recognition. Car comes in, they come right in, they go through the escape lane and into the vacuum center. So we're not going to prohibit anybody, any customer or any, uh, you know, membership customer or pan customer to use the vacuums, but we also don't want chaos over at the vacuums. Um, we have a couple of our sites like in Seneca Falls and some of that, you know, we've kind of done some where we didn't do the system, where we have about seventy percent of the customers don't even wash with us that are using the vacuums. And you know, if, the number of vacuums here is, is plentiful and it's, it's in a range of forty. The likelihood there'll never be near forty customers using a vacuum at once, but we don't want backup. It's, we'd rather spend more money to put an extra fifteen vacuums and have them there free. So if one was a breakdown, it was a problem, but we also don't want any backup, any confusion on that site. It's a, we want this to be a very user-friendly car wash site. You see a lot of car washes trying to pack car washes in on these half acre, you know, point six acre, point seven acre sites where they can't have vacuums or they're just, they want to squeeze it in because the property's cheap and it's not our model. Our model is taken, you know, most of the Buckman sites are one and a half to three acres that we purchased from the Buckmans. Um, so we're trying to get a very roomy, comfortable site in Bar Louie. Um, although my kids are just upside down about it because every single month, my wife, myself took our daughters to Bagaboo Creek to see the moose, the tree and the fish. And it's like, when they found out that this was a site, they're like, Dad, and I go, well, Bartley already took that away. Girls, it was not so. But, uh, you know, it's, it's just a great site in our opinion for a car wash. It, it lays out well. We're trying to limit traffic. Uh, removing an entrance to it that we have no problem bringing people, customers into that side type street and getting them and making it, again, we want to keep it friendly. We don't want confusion. Um, you know, I did, you know, my, my history is I did twenty nine years with the state police and I've seen all the accidents imaginable. And this is a situation, that road, as we all know, is one of probably the busiest roads in the, the greater Monroe County, probably New York State, right? So limiting that to all of us when we review this project uh, with Cade and, and all of us at Splash is our idea was just simply, let's eliminate it. Like, we're going to create confusion by trying to continue allowing customers to come in as they do now, uh, from, um, the main road. So the Jefferson Road seemed to be better to get customers back out, send them on a right-hand turn and then anything else. And we all, we all agreed to that. And obviously, we, whatever you think, we may should do differently. We're, we're open to any and alls. You know, suggestions you may have. Um, there was a comment I know about sound out of the, the bay. The, the, the sound that's generated is there's two locations on, on a car wash site that generate noise. Is one is the vacuum. So in this application here, there's four, um, turbine motor vacuum units. Those, I would say are pretty much silent. Uh, they'll be ranked around at thirty decibels from twenty, thirty feet away. The exit side of the wash bay, um, is where you generate your noise from the, you might say dryers, but really what they are is producers, blowers. They, they blow to, to dry a car. Um, whether it's any of the other car washes, the Royals, the Delta Sonics, the, you know, Buckmans, class chassis. We all run pretty much similar dryers. There's eight or ten different companies, but the similarities are all the same. And obviously to meet the standards of every town, they've all had to get down below the decimal limits. Um, pretty much every site, including this one, will be under that seventy decibels by the time it hits off property. Um, and I've taken, and I've had sent some pictures of Kate is, I've gone out to the last site, the Clay, where we're building up in Clay. And I stood at twelve thirty in a quiet afternoon, standing at the intersection, um, which I would say is intersection similar to, to this intersection. Um, and there's decimal readings that bounce range between mid sixties, but the majority of them in the low seventies to the low eighties. Just the traffic noise. I mean, there's a vacant building there now. Um, our noise that we generate at the exit side will be nonexistent compared to the road, just general road noise. We, our operations will, will be open from seven AM to nine PM. We're not going to put any strain on area businesses that where customers may be sleeping like any hotels, uh, you know, residents in, in a distant neighborhood. Um, and off the backside of property entrance side, there's virtually no noise there. It's just simply a customer pulling into the bay. Again, the generated noise areas, um, are at the accident and in Geneva, the customer, we have a homeowner that's literally where you'd see the property line where the entrance to the wash is, we have the almost identical wash. where you'd see the property line where the entrance to the wash is, we have the almost identical wash over there, pretty much a very similar setup. And the customer's house is probably, I would say seventy to eighty feet from the entrance to the wash bay and, uh, a wonderful man and beautiful home and has absolutely no issue with any noise disturbance of any kind. Um, and his biggest concern wasn't so much noise, he was concerned about the music. And he could attest to that. We control, we don't allow people blurring music sitting there at the vacuum centers. Um, man sites too, they're just, and, and I think you can see it with the other car washes that are in your town. They're, they're well-run, right? Their employees are out there taking care of it. If there's garbage, it's picked up. If, you know, it's a different, different animal than car washes ten, fifteen years ago, all the unmanned ones that somebody may have sat by for two or three days and had garbage flowing all over and things broken down. If a customer was disoriented, was confused, nobody to help them. Um, just the opposite, what's going on here. Very customer-friendly, customer-oriented.
Is there anything else I can answer?
You know, very good. I think you can help your daughter. You've got lots of room for a moose head on the front of your building right here. So, uh,
These, these, let me just figure out to this, we've been working with our architects for a year to develop the site. We've added another architect, Jeff LeDoux from, from, from who was with ADS is on his own now and part of this, our team. Um, the, the next, the next generation you'll see of this will be even far superior to what you're seeing tonight for the visual. But these are the similar products that we use. These are the products, the, the cultured stone. Um, that is not the actual physical site, but it's two color boards of the colors that we use. Those are our colors. And all our roofs are standing seam, uh, metal roofs. And that is our blue. We worked with Sherwin-Williams and the metal manufacturer out west for over six months to get them to design that blue to create the, the splash color blue. So.
Very good. I just want to make a couple, I've got a question for you real quick. What would, what would, um, the customers be going into the car wash for?
The, we have a, uh, what's called a mat room. So you can bring your mats in. Well, in this situation, we'd probably have three mat machines. These are high-end fifteen thousand dollar mat machines that you can get four mats through in a minute. You drop your mats in, dirty, they come out completely clean. They drop to you. You walk back out with clean mats. If you have a rubber mat, there'll, there's a basically a big stainless steel sink system with kind of like a, a commercial kitchen washer. So you can wash out your mats if you want. It's just another free service for our customers.
Nice. And then one other comment for me, um, yeah, I heard Kate talk about, um, you know, being able to put the gates up automatically if there was an emergency and, and getting the traffic out. Um, you get that one nice day in the middle of February where everybody's getting their car washed. Um, I've driven by Delta Sonic where they've got three or four, looks like three or four lanes of people trying to get in there. And if something happened, get all them out of there. I'm not sure they'd all get off on Jefferson Road in time before the, the vehicles got there. It's just a thought that popped into my head when he talked about that. So you might want to again, think about that two-way egress ingress that, um, was recommended by the, the fire marshal. Um, or I'm sorry, it wasn't fire marshal, was it?
That's Kevin Wilson.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson, yep. Um, but I just, I would worry that, okay, something's happening. We got maybe three minutes to clear this site. If you've got all those cars in line and they're trying to wait for traffic on Jefferson, it might work and might not. I just want you to think about that.
We, there's two things we, we also can do is we can tie in all the gates to the fire alarm. So the gates would just all open at the, at an onset of a fire alarm. There are also remote controls, so they can hit them with a remote control. We could surely balance them in an area of the vacuum centers away from emergency traffic pretty quick. Um, at any one time, there'd be no less than probably three employees on site. They would, their priority would shut the wash down and immediately respond to an emergency. Um, so I, I, I think we could move cars around pretty quick and get them at least in an area to get them away for, for the, the emergency vehicles to get on site and get, you know, to proper. So.
Okay.
But we definitely will work to make sure that's, that's a priority.
Great, very good. Well, it's just a concept. Um, I'll recognize, uh, Mrs. Brill, would you like to go first?
Sure. Do any of the other, um, competitive companies you mentioned have that, um, floor carpet washer thingy?
Um, it's, it's funny that I'm, I don't know of any around here, but I think it's something that we've kind of designed our buildings uh, over the last year now. So it's, it's our concept. We have them in some of our other, many of our other locations. I don't know of anyone that has them.
Yeah, that's cool. I've never heard of it.
I haven't either.
I'm not a member anywhere, so I don't go to them. So I don't know.
We hope to earn your membership.
Well, I need my carpets washed. That sparked my interest. Very much so. I could run those things through on a regular basis. And then my other question was, had, were any other locations in Henrietta looked at?
Uh, we, we looked at Henrietta for a long time and ironically, we're Royalis now. We looked at it and ultimately we walked away from it several years ago. It just was not big enough. Pardon me?
Wasn't two acres.
Well, I just, we couldn't, we need, in our concept, we need vacuum so forth. So, um, we've, you know, we've, we've looked at multiple locations over years and and this was a town we wanted to be in for a long time, but there wasn't, we've never found a, a location that could support, we felt could support the cost of building um, a car wash and being competitive in the market. Um, this one's far enough away and it, it really, it hits a different traffic pattern than anything, any car wash similar to this in the greater area. I mean, I know there's other car wash scenario, but I think this is uh, substantially different in certain ways.
Also, Mrs. Brill? Mr. Record?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Um, my initial concepts too were, were potential conflicts were the noise. So I, I think they've answered that pretty well. I mean, I'm still not a hundred percent sure what it's going to sound like, but with the hotel being right there, I was acute to what could be a noise issue. Um, if there's quiet, as they say, I don't think it'll be an issue.
Yeah.
Um, this is just concept though, right?
Yep.
So.
And, and the general comments, number two, it talks about the existing True North Lodge directly to the south of this project.
Hampton, I thought it was a Hampton.
Right. It says the True North Lodge. That's what confused me.
True North Lodge is the owner, owner name of the property. Yep.
That must be the, it must be a franchise or something. It's a Hampton though, right?
Yes.
And again, our hours, we, I mean, we go silent, like very rarely we will tell you if the, the traffic's not there, we're not going to be able to manage.
What would the hours be? I see Connecticut.
The earliest we'd open would be seven AM and the latest we would ever would be not seven to nine.
And that is within, and that was actually one of my questions based off of that noise concept is hours and that fits within our town code, free even construction work.
There, there really, most of our locations open at eight, close by, by eight. There's even in the nicest days of summer, people aren't designed to wash the carpet at night. They've got other things on their mind. Car washing is, is just so limited. It's not feasible to consider staying.
What's, uh, is Hampton three stories?
Three or four.
Yes, four.
Four.
So, no, that was one other concept. I think they've answered that pretty well. The only thing that we've done before is asked for, you know, what would be landscaping, but it wouldn't be on their property, it would be on the south side. Then for a four-story building, I don't even know if you do anything with that. You couldn't put anything in that would help any, I don't know. So that was the only thing that came across my mind. Otherwise, it is what it is. You know, I think everybody thought it could be a restaurant. It's not. It'd be great if it was with, with everything there, but we don't have that say. So.
None of them succeed.
Me too. You know, a good Mexican joint that can go in next year.
So a couple of pretty good ones in Canada.
There are, yeah. We can, we need one or two up here. We, we go to Canadagua, right?
Yeah.
Um, so no, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any more comments. It was just the noise and the, the hours of operation would save the answer.
Great, thank you. Not sure, recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as with everybody else, the, the two big things are the decibels and the traffic. I'm still not convinced of the traffic. Um, the decibels, I, I thanks for the numbers because I was kind of looking this up as you're going. So for my cohorts here. Um, as far as the vacuums go, they're basically less than a normal one-on-one conversation with somebody. And the dryer would be the equivalent of being inside your car at sixty miles an hour. So both of those are a lot less than I was thinking.
So how many decibels was that? Twenty-five or thirty?
They, they said thirty-eight for the, uh, vacuum and he said about, uh, uh, let's see, seventy for the dryer, is that right? Okay. And in decibels, the reason I look it up, they're confusing me because they're kind of like Richter scale, they're orders of magnitude. So, um, that's good, good data.
Um, the, the seventy was the north face exit of the blowers, right?
Right. Which, which brings me to my other thing. You know, you're asking, um, for a setback change, but it's on the side that will be away from that dryer. Um, so that makes it more manageable for me. And I know this is a concept, so we're not getting to that yet. Um, uh, and another thing that stands out is I can tell you have pride in your company. Um, and that goes a long way because we like people that have pride in their company in this town. Um, so keep that up. Um, and I, I hope this does work. My only outstanding issue is, uh, traffic there. I understand you're trying to keep people off of Jefferson, but we're having problems with Clay now. So, uh, that's, that's a, a smaller road and they are getting backed up as, so I'm a little bit worried about that backup backing up into Jefferson Road anyway. So it's something we're going to have to look at when we get this pinned down a little bit more. But then again, I'll, I'll defer to the pros that know this stuff. Yes, Mrs. Brill.
So I'm envisioning, because I've seen that Delta Sonic, it is unbelievable. Like, I sat there one day and I pounded the cars and I did the little math and my God, I'm like, wow, I'm in the wrong business. But, um, as far as, um, cars piling up and then Amazon is right next door. If that opens at seven and we have all that traffic that we've been hearing, so many complaints about with all the coming.
And, and there's two, two lanes coming that way, one coming this way, right? So that's a three-lane, uh, Clay, I, I, your idea is good if you don't know what's there now and how, how busy it's gotten. So that's going to take some consideration, but.
Yeah, if I could, uh, say a couple of things towards traffic, Mr. Borkowski.
Sure.
So the, the tunnel operation, this can get a car through and I believe it's less than a minute. Is that right?
Yeah.
So the goal for the site is when you get on site, you're through the car wash and off-site within five minutes. That's kind of the splash goal for these sites. It, it's the express car wash model. Um, so that's one aspect of it.
Can I say one thing more?
Yeah, yep.
It really, if anybody ever just done to Geneva, that's, we just opened that site a couple of months ago. It really is a, a great model. See, it's, it has a lot of similarities. But you can see the speed we move cars through. We don't get the delays, the long backups. We're, we do no upsell. Um, we get them to the pay stations quick and easy and the majority of our customers become members. So the gates, they pull up and the gates are simply open and they go through. They get greeted. There's nobody overly prepping the cart because there's no need for the state of our, the state of their equipment we use. But the, the, um, is, is we come in and we look at the speed of it, it's not so much how fast you're getting through the tunnel. It's the customers keep moving, you know, we're, we're not doing any express detailing. We're not trying to sell them an oil change. We're not trying to sell them all the things that slow a process down. Our model is built upon this called Express Wash. And the sign will say Splash Express Wash. Um, and it's really, we wash your car and give you the opportunity to vacuum. It's that no frills, incredible clean and great vacuums. And that's what we're asking.
He was supposed to one price set. I don't have five options, five levels of service to choose from at the, at the, um, gate, right? It's just, it's one for everybody?
There's three, three levels you can.
Three, okay.
But once a customer locks in their, their program, their membership, there, it's all done either through the computer or by phone or messaging. Um, they, if they re-up it, if they cancel it, it's not done on site. It's done, uh, it's done, you know, basically by email is, is probably ninety-five percent of people do it through email. We have a few people that call in. Uh, but we don't, you know, we, we, it's immediate cancellations. It's never a question thing, but we don't tire our tenants up with it. When a customer signs up, if there's any question issues, they come back on their parking a vacuum spot and we have a little greeter area for them to come into or we go out, meet them out at the vacuum center, address it with them.
Yeah, let, let me clarify my concern. I, I, one, once again, you're the pride in your place. I believe you. I believe you about the pace inside the property. My worry is before they get in your property or possibly leaving it.
Right, I understand.
So, um, yeah, I, I have no problem once you're on your property. I think you're going to turn them right through. That's no problem. I'm worried about people making a left turn off of Clay to get in there and even taking a right turn onto Jefferson. Um, I know we, we, you're designing that so it can only go one direction. It's still Jefferson. Um, so as much as you can get people out, you're kind of hoping that they go and use the vacuums because you don't have a long queue to get out of Jefferson. So there's, I mean, I'm just pointing out that this isn't conceptual. Um, so I'm just worried about traffic. Both of those roads are ugly. I love the onsite plan they have. I love the flow there. I'm not concerned with that at all, but, um, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Yeah, left-hand turns coming in there would be kind of tough, um, on Clay Road at, at times because that is a busy road. Um, I heard you mention twenty dollars. Is that the works for this setup?
That's our, our base, our base prices for the, you can get a monthly for twenty dollars. And then they go all the way up depending what you want on it up to all the, the.
So when I come through with my Mercedes, I want the very best you got. What price is that?
I think, I don't have anything to do with operations anymore, thankfully.
Hey, I don't own the Mercedes either, okay?
I was going to ask where you get the Mercedes.
My truck is the Mercedes. That big horn.
But, but I think, I think it's around at thirty-seven, thirty-eight dollars for all the, with the ceramics and then the tires shine.
Is it higher pricing down in Connecticut?
Pardon me?
Is it higher pricing down in Connecticut?
Uh, it's, you know, I can't, I can't say yes or no, but it doesn't really matter. If you have a membership here, it's good everywhere.
Okay.
So.
Cause I just saw the pricing, but most of them I was looking at were in Connecticut and they're all closed already. So they must have stricter.
Well, they, they have a lot of a hand wash based on it. They actually have ones where you're pulling, there's no equipment. It's all hand washed, the whole thing. Cause a lot of those towns back in the day, they were, they were some pretty tough towns there, as you mentioned.
So you mentioned Buckmans and, um, you mentioned Geneva for a, a new facility like the one that we're talking about here today for this concept?
So thanks to Kate, um, yeah, this, for instance, Kate and DDS, then they're doing all of our development for the greater Rochester area um, up to Syracuse for the site plans for civil engineering. With Chase Construction is handling all the construction on these projects, um, from the, that we bought for the, the Buckman sites. And the Melco site over in Penfield that are all good and complete remodels, renovations to the buildings, equipment, grounds, vacuum centers and so forth. And then all the classy chassis that are being renamed and obviously upgraded as well.
Well, uh, looks like a good concept and looks like these car washes are as popular as storage facilities right now.
You know, it's interesting because when I got in this, it's been a grind, right? It was, it was, the truth of the matter is when we started off and borrowing five thousand bucks, but to borrow the money to get our first one and you go along through this and then all of a sudden these unlimited plans come on and.
Residual income.
It used to be people washed three to four times a year. Now they wash three to four times a month.
Mm-hmm.
And customers that didn't want to be a customer because their car got dirty and they didn't see the point of getting it washed, don't care anymore. They don't care because dirty, the minute they pull out, because they'll just pull right back in and come right back to the wash. So unlimited wash is obviously what's, what spurred on the programs and then obviously, um, it's, it probably is one day in ten, fifteen years. Now it'll be like the CVS Rite Aid's. You'll have wherever your passage, you'll be in Florida and you'll go right to your, you know, there will be a wash with your tag on it, so pretty much in every state.
So will this be the first one in Monroe County if approved?
The first new build, yes, it would be the first new build.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some others, um, in the hopper. There's, we have about probably close between all of us, we probably have about twenty to twenty-five in the pipeline to get developed in the next year and a half.
Wow.
Well, Jeff, thanks for your answers. I won't take up any more, more time. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barley.
Yeah. Chair will recognize Mr. List.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I would, I'll agree with all my colleagues here about the traffic. I think that coming off of Clay Road will be the toughest, uh, point, making a right. Craig, wasn't there something, we, there was a project here. Maybe they asked here, some, uh, facility wanted to go into, uh, off Clay Road behind the hotel by the Amazon. And we're in their discussion about possibly changing Clay, I mean, adding lanes to, adding a third lane on Clay Road.
Yes, uh, the supervisor, Mr. Martin and I have talked about, uh, additions to this road about putting a third lane in.
Yeah.
It did kind of get spurred with what would be the T-Mobile call center that's south.
Right.
Um, we thought that that was going to have, uh, a good amount of bus activity. Um, originally it was trying to be in scope to go towards downtown. Um, as their employee clientele is still more, more tuned to riding the bus and driving the car, which is good for them. And that worked out well, but there's, the sidewalks here were terrible. There was no sidewalk. So we were looking to enhance this corridor into a three-lane for the Amazon traffic and what would be higher pedestrian traffic for the T-Mobile site.
So I see more and more traffic coming this way.
Yes. Well, the good news is the T-Mobile site will have an hour. Yes. Well, the good news is the T-Mobile site will have an out through the getting of building, which is redone through another DDS project that getting a building has become green light, Gorbel. And an Amazon XL on the back. They're going to connect that with a road so that there's an access out the backside, but no, I, I don't know if there's any other. The funds to extend this road would be a transportation development district. And we would have to go after the people that already built. So I'm not sure that's thank you, that we have a lot of ability to go for the funds on something like that. But that would be nice to extend this road.
Have you guys addressed the sidewalk, the comment about extending the sidewalk on Clay Road?
I, I saw the comment and it was basically, we should have the discussion with the board about the sidewalk. If that's something the board, you know, feels that is important on the site, we can certainly take a look at it. I would point out the obvious that the sidewalk is kind of leading to nowhere as it heads south. You have the hotel, but which has no sidewalk and then the industrial park. And this won't be a very pedestrian heavy use. So, but we should have that discussion. I agree.
The only other issue, you know, with Royal Car Wash, Jefferson Road, since it's been put in, I don't know if it's happened once, maybe, maybe they've repaired it once, maybe twice. But as you exit Royal, the breakdown of the pavement from all the, the watch, especially in the winter time.
We won't, we won't have that because we don't do any pavements. It'll, it'll all be eight inches of concrete rebar.
Love you what?
It'll all be eight inches of stick concrete rebar reinforced. We don't do any asphalt anymore.
As you act, as you exit the car wash.
Every, every bit of it will be, will be concrete.
So I'm talking at Royal, as you exit, you're on, you're going on Jefferson Road and they've replaced that black top with, with concrete now.
Right. Yeah, we start right off with concrete. We've learned our lesson over the years that it's asphalt just doesn't hold up for in this situation, hot days, you got all the turn in vehicles sitting at the parts fast turn. And so we concrete A to Z soup to nuts and we do all eight inch reinforced wood rebar and mesh. And we, you know, I'm kind of, I take our, I've been building my entire life. So that's what I take my pride in is doing things the right way. And I, I hated asphalt ever since we got into the building business because in seven, eight years, it starts, it's really starts to fail. And then you're just ripping it back up. Your business is open and how do you rip it up and do it and not affect your business? So we just start right off. We start with a clean slate with concrete.
So over time, if it starts to, you know, let's say it does break down, you're, is it, is it, is it splash car wash responsibility to, to repair Jefferson Road or would that fault of the DOT to?
To be the DOT. Yeah, that's, obviously there's that, obviously on the state right where we're, it's, it's an active, God didn't even get near that. I mean, it's, we deal, so it's, obviously it is part of the DOT. Yes, sir. And, and I don't think they're gonna let us, but we're gonna go concrete right up to the, our line and then it is asphalt from there.
Okay.
It, and you know, speaking of the traffic is, is obviously we, on this preliminary, this concept plan, we eliminated the entrance of Jefferson Road. But if, if the board felt it more appropriate to keep that one also open to help relieve some of the traffic, we'd be more than happy to do that. We, we just thought it was the right thing to do. We didn't, weren't trying to circumvent certain traffic all that way. We, we thought the board would, they're telling me to want to see that element. We thought it was the better route. But if we could surely go back to design on that and add, add our mind Jefferson and bring them around and add them at the entrance.
And you're gonna keep those nice trees in the quarter, right? Cause there's two, there's, there's some nice, beautiful mature trees.
We're not taking down any of the nice trees. It's.
Yeah, all, all those.
I'm a directory hiker, so when we do developments, we try to, especially oaks and in the, in the nice trees, it took a long time to get there.
It'll, it'll really expand that buffer area too. That's along the highway, pulling it back from the highway. And I'll say that the site uh, plan as proposed here is about a half acre reduction in impervious surface. It's about a 34% decrease in impervious as to what's out there now onsite. So it'll, it'll be a good improvement environmentally.
Well, since no restaurant has succeeded there in over 50 years, uh, this probably looks like a good concept, so.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
So first facility in Monroe County. Um, and you said you specifically wanted Henrietta.
It, it may be, Madam President, me speaking, we, I've been in business for 22 years in the car wash business. We have, our car wash brand was classy chassis, uh, which formed with splash car wash. This is the first new build, complete new build. We also purchased the Buckman sites. So we've been, we own many sites in Monroe County and many are going, undergoing renovations. This is the first new build under the name of Splash in Monroe County.
Well, I think what I was looking for is you've built these facilities before, not necessarily here, but.
No, we have under the name of classy chassis though. This one's will be under the name, they're all.
Like a cookie cutter type of layout type thing?
Yeah, I wouldn't say cookie cutter. It's been literally a year of intensive design. It's continually learning. We make modification changes to the buildings to try to really maximize and make them the absolute best as possible. And I think when you see the next generation that'll be out in a couple of weeks, it's, we just finished the two major design, new designs for the builds in Lorraine, New York at the, at the entrance to the Fort Drum, base up in Watertown and for us, we go. And this one will be, as great as those plans are, we want better. So I just think there's some more things and we're happy that Jeff LeDoux joins our team and we're really gonna, I think you're gonna see a really neat design come out here in the next couple of weeks.
Well, you seem to know the decibel levels for the vacuum in the thirties and then for the exit of the system in the seventies, you said. The, there's a rear setback issue here that joins that hotel to the south. It's relatively close. What kind of decibel readings do you get on the entrance of the car wash?
It would be virtually impossible for us to get them because the road, this would be the noise where, that the car wash entrance makes us talking. The noise from the road far exceeds any of the noise that would be at the entrance to it. So any decimal readings we would get would just be, would be the ambient noise of the road traffic.
Traffic would overwhelm whatever you hear at the entrance.
Absolutely.
And also, you also have the idling cars, the waiting stacked up in the area joining the hotel also.
Correct.
Could that be measured?
We could do it. We could measure it. Hopefully that'll be electric cars. Oh, no.
Talked to the applicant before. I would be more concerned about having the setback reduced in the front. Front setback and trade it off for doing any kind of a rear setback issue, essentially trying to slide the, the whole site up a little bit towards the Jefferson roadside. So I don't think the exit decibels are going to be any kind of an issue with the road, with the traffic noises there.
I, I agree with this. I agree that, that you're not gonna, the exit side at that road level is again, it's just gonna be washed. It's, you're not gonna hear any noise coming from the exit.
But I am concerned about the stacking of cars, the joining the property and the idling noises.
If you're good, we can try sliding it, you know, 10, I would say probably I, just from looking quick, I would, I don't think 10, 10 feet or maybe a little bit more. I don't think.
Feet to meet the rear setback. So we're at about 80 feet now for the front. And the reason we're holding that is that's what Bart Louis was at.
For screening.
That's where Bart Louis is.
That's what Bart Louis is at. And the two neighboring properties are less than 80. They're in the seventies, 75, I think, 77.
Yeah, we beat your max without going for a variance.
What's that?
80 feet, your front setback is 80 feet. If you can prove it on the other side, we think you can.
That's what.
Otherwise you have to go for a variance.
Right, that's what we're shooting for. 80 feet.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not much. Unless you go for the variance.
Yeah, I mean, they could move north and go to the variance, but I guess I'm also a little conflicted with queuing out to Jefferson.
It'll be my concern too.
You're, you're balancing what the noise to the south with stacking to the north.
Yeah, I'd like more room to the south and less up towards Jefferson if we had to make that trade.
How many at 80 feet, I mean, you're technically getting, I mean, you're talking almost 20 feet of car.
Yeah, you, you're probably, and the realization is, I always say a full, and I know this from the car wash business of the popular pickup truck out there now is a four-door pickup truck, uh, you know, the five and a half foot box, four doors. They're right on 19 feet.
Right.
So that's about as big as we ever see on our site. And obviously once in a while you get the guy with the long box four-door pickup and then you all have a car. So I would say that, we always say the average that we probably run at about 15 to 16 feet. So you probably have realistically five cars. What I think is something I forgot to mention is we run what's called an anti-collision sensor. So five feet outside the exit of the bay, it's just a two foot by two foot sensor embedded into the concrete. And it's a foolproof sensor. We also run what's called no pileup camera system throughout the interior of the building. Both those are a kind of a preventive measures to ensure there's never a pileup. So if a car can't move because he's waiting for, there's stacked up five deep on Jefferson, they can't get going. The sensor senses the metal in the car and it literally quietly just shuts the car wash down. And when the car moves off the sensor, it ramps the car wash right back up and keeps everything moving. So we wouldn't run a car wash throughout the, the anti-sensor collision. We haven't built a car wash in years without it. But now they've added a new system called no pilot. So it's a camera system that monitors inside of that wash. And if it sees, it recognizes something that's not correct, movement is not moving correctly. Same thing, the car wash just simply shuts down. So we're, we're not going to push cars into cars and cause thousands or tenths of a thousand dollars of damage for a, for a $10 wash. So.
Is there anything, I'm sorry, I'm tapping on Mr. McIntyre's question. Is that okay? Piggybacking on this, anything planned for the south side along the property line from the pavement? Is there a possibility of a fence? Would that help more of maybe just the idling?
Noise screening would be.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I'm not, I'm understanding Mr. McIntyre's comment, but I'm not sure I'm comfortable sacrificing the north queuing. I mean, you don't want that thing shutting off and on every 10 minutes because you can't get cars out to the right. Now you do have, uh, obviously a good gap size with the, the traffic light. You're real close to the light that will switch. But it's busy. I mean, if you got two minutes of traffic, you may not get a car to the right out of there in two minutes and you're gonna want that queuing if they don't go to the vacuums, right?
So what we did in Geneva, uh, again, similar situation, the gentleman's home was very close. And just working with the town of Geneva and the homeowner is we put up a beautiful double-sided natural wooded stained fence. We could do it in vinyl. We could do it, unfortunately, it's, you know, materials, but we could definitely do a fence. Uh, our Williamsville location is completely fenced to the neighboring properties. Uh, so that, that'd be no problem to a fence on that backside.
If you have room, would that be more sufficient?
I think, I think Delta Sonic used to like a final fencing to their outreach to the south.
The south was an existing stockade from Action Auto that there.
It could help with sound.
Yeah.
I think you can't, you can't mess with the setback then.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of distance too from the, from the entrance to the tunnel to the actual hotel. I don't know what the distance is, but it's probably
It's long.
In excess of 150 feet. So there's that too. You know, there's that kind of natural distance buffer for noise to get, to actually get to the hotel where we might want to maximize that exit side for, for traffic.
I think the fence would be good aesthetically now that it's needed, but as far as the sound goes, you might, you might buffer some sound for the first floor rooms, but the sound would carry over the fence up to two, three and four. So I'm not sure how effective that would be if you're really looking to mitigate at any noise from there. Right.
Get above the second floor of the hotel, they're gonna get all the noise.
Right. I think the one comment on fences that I, I would make too is if it's a fence constructed well and appropriate materials and maintained, but I'm not saying that splash is some, we're always going to be the owner. I mean, who knows what life brings us, right? Is how they're maintained is we all see the sloppy fences or the ones that don't get stained and taken care of are the ones that is the snowplows push and they hit them and they knock them and then it's now we repairs them. And what went from a beautiful thing the first five years is the biggest eye sore of the property. And that's what we had in, in the Ponrosa situation was a Ponrosa restaurant that we bought. And the neighbors were so upset because the fence had been neglected for the last 15 years and it was the biggest eye sore to the entire property was the building was beautiful because it burned down years ago and they rebuilt it, but they never rebuilt this fence that they just kept letting, and nobody put, they wouldn't put any money into it. And that was a comment that was made is will you maintain the fence? So.
Is that the Geneva property? So it's on the old Ponrosa?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering where it was. Okay. Gotcha.
We like all, we liked former restaurants. Seems to be a lot of them for sales.
And for the record, I would favor the sidewalk. I think for no other reason is you could stand there on the sidewalk and just take in the whole site. Just look at all over.
Yeah, we, I have no issue with, you know, whatever you would like with sidewalks.
Very good. I've got one more question for you. So, um, the Buckmans that you bought, are they all going to be rebranded as, as splashes? Or are you gonna keep the Buckman's name on those?
No, they're all being rebranded right now. Rockport's been rebranded already. Charlie and Spencer Porter are within the next two weeks of signing, we finished. Long Pond's a process that Kay's got to get us through the, the ton of grease, which, um, as you well know, is a long process. So we'll, we are demolishing two of the three buildings there, the, the rock, the auto center and the laundromat. And so that'll be, we'll rebrand that. Once we get farther along, we don't want to put our name on that existing site or any of these sites as they stood. They've, they've gone, the three have gone through a fair bit of improvements, but, uh, Long Pond is gonna get completely basically almost ground up.
Great. And you never thought about a coffee shop? We could use, always use an extra coffee shop in this town, so.
I like coffee. I like coffee too.
He's being sarcastic. Yeah. Very good. Well, thank you very much. I love the idea and we'll look forward to seeing it when you come back.
Thanks everyone.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I just threw up the satellite image real quick too, to show the entrance. It looks like the exit, the existing, the entrance to Splash proposed is almost in the same location that it is now. Doesn't seem to be changed too much. It is a little bit further south than I thought even. It's past at least the two lanes and probably will still possibly queue up to that point, but it's, uh, it's in the throat, almost a, a single northbound lane, but close.
Okay.
Can you show how far that motel is off?
Yeah, I don't have the full Google Earth. This isn't my laptop.
Pretty considerable how far that motel is.
Parking lot's right here with the hotel in back.
No, I don't know where Bugaboo Creek sits in comparison to this, you know, the entrance tunnel of, um.
So that's about a little bit farther where the air was a little bit farther.
Yeah.
Yep, pretty close.
And actually, I mean, I mean, your, your tunnel doesn't line up with that because your storm system's over there, isn't it, Kay? And you're proposed to you're even a little further west off the property line.
Right.
This is the eastern property line, right?
Yeah.
And you have some sort of GI practice.
We're about 30 feet off that.
Yeah, so your tunnel's gonna be right along here.
Yes.
So, yeah, you certainly got, well, that's, you know, 20, those are at least nine by 18 parking spaces at the Hampton. With at least a 24, possibly a 30 foot drive aisle upfront, right? So 20, 40, 60, 100, we're talking probably almost 140, 150 on their property.
Yeah, plus it's a couple hundred feet away by the time you get to our watch.
Yeah.
I, I don't think, to be honest, I don't think I hear much of that.
Yep. Did I hear you say early on you're a retired state trooper?
I am.
Awesome.
I did 20, 28 and a half years with the state police.
Thank you for your service. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Did you get pulled over?
No, I just thought I heard him say that. I, and then he said he was in construction and I'm like, okay, sounds good.
He might've given me one, but.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
We'll see you next time.
Yep.
Want to take a little recess, anybody? Uh, five minutes?
Yep, okay.
They don't want to take one. They said, no, let's go.
We'll take a five minute. We'll be back at 7:55. Sure, Mr. Martin.
First one is for Tesla.
Okay. Okay. Is it really the eighteen? I got seventeen on my watch. Okay. Well, I dated it wrong last time I was here, right? So.
We still in the condition red?
We are, yeah. We're wearing yellow. We don't have to wear the mask just to boost it. Unfortunately, if you haven't.
Got to get that Mercedes cleaned, right? I never got the punchline. So they have no basis of through as to how many people tested are actually passed. So they're gauging it off of four hundred thousand people.
No kidding. Right. I'll be done.
Right. It's ten, ten positive tests per hundred thousand, so like forty, forty tests. Positive of a hundred thousand people. Infinitism. And I know a lot of people that are sick.
What's that?
That's really the funny part is I probably know twenty, so.
I I thought this was going to be quick.
Okay.
Yeah. I told my wife, yeah, probably eight o'clock tonight.
Other car wash.
Other car wash, right.
She, well, I was, I was trying to put the two together. It's a person on the east wing that was out. And Becky was in the, but I think she was out due to just baby stuff. Because I I don't get to see.
You know, when you're going off roof every day or ten black, I don't know what your schedules are.
Yeah, I don't think you.
You get the light as all these Amazon trucks are always.
I'm doing that. Does he? Yeah, I'll take it.
Well, evidently Heather sent us a link to get this stuff on. I didn't, I don't see.
Friday, they said, right?
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Now I gotta drive all the way over there.
Yeah.
What were you saying?
We got one even closer right on the corner.
I'll get ahold of Heather and see what we can do.
What were we talking about? Yeah, no, a lot of people are getting sick.
Right.
Yeah, and I feel bad for Becky. If she's been, you know.
Hey, Jim.
Right.
Side setbacks and. We have to go with some sort of a side setback issue.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Next, the next item on the agenda, application number PB three, three, two, the fairways at Riverton subdivision, Riverton parcel A. For preliminary subdivision approval of a one hundred and thirty lot, single family residential subdivision of plus or minus fifty-five point seven, seven, eight acres located on Erie Station Road in a planned unit development zone district.
Good evening, Walt. Good evening, Walt Baker with DSB Engineers. With me tonight is Richard Battisti, president of Faber Homes. We're here tonight regarding Forest Creek Equity's development, as the chairman mentioned. And one hundred and thirty lots on fifty-five acres. And we were tabled at the meeting last month, basically for two concerns. The first concern kind of had a dual concern. It was a front setback and the side setbacks that came about from the the building inspector in code enforcement. And subsequent to that, we did meet last week. Chris Martin was at the meeting. And we met with the fire marshal, the code enforcement officer, Chris, Bernie and myself and went over the issues and we discussed it at that meeting last month was one of Chris's ideas was to move the sidewalk two foot in the right way instead of one foot in the right way. And also would we consider a thirty-five foot setback versus what we proposed was a thirty foot? So we agreed to that and the code enforcement officer is in agreement and I believe Chris is as well. So we're going to go with the thirty-five foot front setback. We changed the plans when we submit for final. We'll have that on there.
Right.
And the other issue was the side setback, which we proposed fifteen foot between structures when it was built on the lots in a five foot minimum, basically on one side. But we had to attain fifteen foot separation. Again, the code enforcement officer, we met with him and went over that issue. We resolved that by going with a symmetrical seven and a half feet on either side. So both sides of the property be seven and a half feet. And so we'll have fifteen feet between structures still. But they won't have an issue of trying to control or monitor as the applications come in to make sure that fifteen feet, excuse me, works between two buildings. So we resolved that and I think we're good with that. That was item number one. The second item was the Riverton Association. And I tried to meet with them. Their meeting is actually tonight. It's probably going on right now. But I spoke with the vice president and I sent him the plans. He shared all the plans with all the board members. And we got a consensus back and he wrote us today and I sent that to Chris.
I didn't, no, I didn't see it.
I saw it in the packet. I don't think I saw an email. I saw the.
Yeah, no, the email came out this morning.
Right, and speaking with, his name was Brandon. He's the VP, Brandon Luther. And they did discuss about the concept from years ago when it was first developed to have the tunnels. And they do have an existing tunnel now that goes over to parcel E, I believe it's called, where the.
It does.
Yeah.
Under Scottsdale West Town Road, yeah.
Right. Well, now the association is finding out that the maintenance costs to take care of that is pretty excessive. And so they're, they're, they're happy with us doing what the supervisor wanted. Was they have sidewalks and a crosswalk as we discussed at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, I was on the ARB when Bernie came in years and years and years ago to kind of talk about this and and, you know, I did mention a tunnel at that point, thinking that there'd be kids from both neighborhoods that that ride the school bus and want to go back and forth. But he did explain the cost of it and frankly, the engineering of getting under that road too. So it wasn't a big deal for me. It would be nice, of course, but yeah, I live in Riverton and they've got that other tunnel, which is kind of gross underneath there and
Yeah.
other things too, so.
They reached out to the town. I don't know if it was eight months, maybe a year ago, asking if we owned them.
The tunnel?
Yeah, both tunnels, the Countess and Scottsville West. And we said, no.
Well, Brandon, obviously he's involved with the the maintenance costs for the association. So they're finding out that having these amenities aren't exactly the thing to have. It was a nice idea back in the nineteen eighties when they're brand new, but now, you know, he has to live with it.
Well, thank you. And so I read, I read the plans and such and and so I know everybody agrees that the the traffic and the sightlines are going to be good there. And and they've kind of put the onus on the builder to 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 maintain that ditch. That's not your responsibility. Once your houses are built, right? That's Chris, that's a state road, isn't it? So, you know, once, once the summer, we'll get the state to come by and they'll cut those things down. But they're getting high right now and pulling out a Countess every day. I know what it's like when you can't see those cars zipping down from Scottsville. I just, I'm a little bit nervous about this. I I I read everything. I understand. Everybody agrees that everything's okay. But they don't adhere to the speed limits coming either way. Now, maybe once we have traffic coming in and out of there, people realize I can't go so fast anymore. But what is your responsibility to keep that ditch trimmed back? Now, I mean, you have to do it now. It looks like they want you to, but once you're built and gone, that's not going to be your job, right?
It's within the right of way. It falls under New York State.
Yeah.
It's certainly if there are issues where we get complaints from residents, you know, we can push the state. You let them know it's concerned. Worst case scenario, you know, we send our crews out and.
Yeah.
I mean, it's happened before.
Yeah, I know we've, you know, I've called the state pretty much every summer because they get high enough that you can't see. So it's not going to be a big deal. I just, I I just, I'm nervous about this because all the extra traffic and and again, hopefully, once these houses are up there and people are used to traffic turning both out of Countess and and from your side of the road, they'll slow down as they come, you know, from the east and come from, from the, I'm sorry. Was it, yeah, east and west. Yeah, coming down. Okay, anything else, board members on this application? Mr. Barley, I'll start with you, sir.
Yes, I do have some concerns. Sightline is definitely a concern. Speed of that road and that curve is definitely a a concern for me. But on top of that, I spoke to Kevin Wilson. He didn't have a problem with moving that back to thirty-five feet. But none of us have a problem with that either. I spoke to Richard Harrow, our fire marshal. He does have a big concern about fire and how close the buildings would be. And we spoke in depth about that. He wanted that to be at least fifteen to sixteen feet. He also sent me a, took the time to send me an email that I'll enter into the record. So here's a quick description list of the variable alternatives for vinyl siding. Straight vinyl siding. Concerns are that the setbacks, which places housing too close to each other, ten to fifteen feet. Wildflower fires that change with the current climate crisis is also a concern. Wind driven fires also poses significant risk in our area with vinyl siding and houses being placed too close together. As many weather events have occurred, we have high wind warnings. Sometimes as simple as a careless discarded cigarette in a neighborhood in a mulch bed who lives next door could catch fire and spread to the nearby buildings. This has already occurred multiple times to multi unit apartments right here in town, Bennington Hills being an example. Fire starts in a mulch pile next to a structure, runs up the siding and into the soffit where it is literally run across the roof. Attic trust area. I hope this helps you out. And then he sent out some ratings on vinyl siding and how houses being too close, ten to fifteen feet are of very high risk. In fact, he says that FEMA cautions against this. It seems to be a high risk for fires. He's recommending fiber cement siding as a way of curtailing or helping these fires not to spread. That's the concern I had with trying to pass something without hearing from both Kevin Wilson and the fire marshal. Also, with that being said, I'm very concerned about these homes being closer and not out where the fire marshal wants them.
Fire marshal was at the meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the fire marshal was at the meeting we had last week.
He just sent this to me yesterday.
All right, well, he agreed with the fifteen feet. We're not less than fifteen feet.
So.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a minimum, right. And some of our houses, the, I don't know how many different designs you have.
Yeah, we have multiple designs. In some cases, it'll be eighteen to twenty feet between houses. But the reason we wanted the tighter site back setbacks originally was be able to fit a third, three, three car garage. Again, fifteen feet is minimum. It'll probably in most cases be more than the fifteen feet. Because we're not perfect and we don't like to ride the line at seven and a half exactly. So, you know, we we always have a little bit of play, so.
That's the largest one, is it fifty-four?
Yeah, fifty-four.
Four and a half.
Is the largest house we have, so.
So in a sense, it's going to be greater than the largest home they have. If somebody selects the largest one, it's still going to be greater than fifteen.
So you're telling me Rich and Walt, that these will be at least sixteen feet apart?
They're probably.
They'll be at least fifteen feet apart.
At least fifteen with the largest house they got, it'd be fifteen.
But in most cases, more than that.
Fifteen with the, because it'd be fifteen, three, I guess it would be. But it depends if they pick what's called McMillan.
Yeah, we have, you know, we have different designs. We have a McMillan and, you know, a Beckham. So for instance, if there was a McMillan and a Beckham next door to each other, it'd be.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
If there was a McMillan and a Beckham, those are just two designs we have. There'd end up being about eighteen feet, nineteen feet between houses.
Okay. And and what's your feeling about the materials being used? On the buildings?
Yeah, I like fiber cement too, but you know, the the fact of the matter is we have to be able to offer a product that is affordable. We do offer it if somebody wants to pay an upgrade for it, but that's not something we can put in as a standard and try to make, you know, especially now with soaring prices of everything, affordability is a factor and we try to make it affordable for everybody, so.
Okay. I still have my concerns, but I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Chairman, we recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys hit everything we were talking about last time as far as it's a decent compromise on everything we were talking about. So I think that was my main issue, the the setbacks and it seems like they're mitigated. Yeah, they're, they're pushing the minimum, but I believe, Mr. Barley, when you, when you started that, you said fifteen or sixteen. Is that in writing? Did he, did he say fifteen or did you miss?
When I talked, when I spoke to.
I mean, on the document you read, you just read off.
Concerns are side setbacks which place housing too close to each other, ten to fifteen feet is what's in my email.
Gotcha, okay.
He wanted things out sixteen feet is what I got from him and speaking with him and he sent me out this email. So that's all I got. You know, I mean, I know that there's been fires like Bennington Hills. No, you know, I'll I'll tell you. Interest rates are going up, right? Housing prices are going up, right? Our assessments are going up, right? House is still really affordable. First house I bought nineteen eighty-five, guess what interest rates were? Twelve percent fixed. They had adjustable rate mortgages. You could have got eight, seven, five, but damn, if that house went up to sixteen percent like, or thirteen percent like money markets were at the time, I wouldn't be able to afford it. So, you know, my, my job here is, is safety first. Affordability, people are always going to find a way to afford what they really want. So that's just the way it is. And if I don't like the assessment they put on my house, guess what I can do? I can sell it. If I don't like the price on the house that I have to buy, guess what I can do? Look somewhere else. But, you know, our residents are going to have enough place to buy. They don't buy this development, they'll buy another development, but they'll buy. But my thing is safety. That's it. You know? And I know the builders got to make profit. We all got to make money too, you know?
Chris, were you in this meeting about the six, sixteen feet?
I was. We had a long discussion on it and I would say at the end, Matt, everybody agreed and including the fire marshal, that seven and a half feet was okay. His main concern was fifteen feet between structures. And it just as a side note, prior to the meeting, we looked through a lot of the instrument survey maps from Queens Park. Even though it's a little different, they had, I think it was like a thirty foot set, front setback. But the side, side setbacks were eight feet. But what I noticed from going through there very, you know, very little. very little. Most of the houses were more than fifteen, well, they had to be more than sixteen feet apart because eight foot was the side setback, but most of them were in the twenty range. You know, I think when you have, you know, one of the largest products out there, uh, uh, your, your house plans. Um, yeah, it could be fifteen feet if you had two of them side to side, but the reality is, I, I'm going to go on a limb here, but from what I saw in Queens Park, I would probably say that eighty to ninety percent were eighteen or twenty feet or greater.
Which is what these guys are saying too, so. And as long as we keep that fifteen minimum and it was okay in this meeting, then that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you. Chris, which one is Queens?
Uh, Queens Park is the one near Martin Road and Moore Road.
That's what, oh, so the one behind like Patty Wakefield.
Correct.
Across from the, the Chinese or the, uh, the temple?
Yeah. Yeah, and in lot size, I believe they're very similar to this.
Yes.
Um, the width, I'm going to go on a limb here and say it was seventy feet, but I.
These are seventy as well, right?
Right. So again, very similar product to, you know, what that subdivision is.
My daughter-in-law just moved into their new house over there last week.
So it's going to be similar. So those style of houses you were mentioning are.
Yes, very similar. Actually, some of those same models will be offered at Riverton. Again, this wasn't to say that every house would use that side setback. It's just to give a flexibility if somebody wanting, because we found that a lot of people wanted three, three-car garages and we didn't want to come in front and ask for a variance or every time that somebody asked, you know, was asking for that, want to be able to offer that sort of thing to our customers.
What type of Bernie, Birmingham fencing, landscaping, that type of thing is being proposed along the thruway? I drive along there just about every day on the thruway and it's amazing to me. Birmingham is not going to mitigate that road noise. What kind of plans are in place as far as design goes?
That's up in, uh, that would be the last section of the project, section five. But in speaking with, with Rich and also Bernie, uh, we're looking at a combination because like you're saying, we did a berm. We don't want to have a berm too tall because then it takes up too much of the backyard, but if we can have a berm that's three to four feet and then put a fence on it. And, uh, I don't know if you've noticed one, uh, if you're going down the four ninety, uh, heading from East Rochester down towards, uh, St. John Fisher. On the right-hand side, there's a wooden fence there that, that's rather decorative and.
The old horse farm? Oh, the one.
The other side.
Yes, the wooden fence. I know exactly what you mean.
Right, right, right.
And then, uh, there's a, there's comments on here about, um, some of the driveway should be moved further from intersections. You said you could address everything that's on here, so I don't even think I need to go over every single thing. I'll just check them off, but, um, I wanted to make sure I was mentioning those. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Chair will recognize Mr. Record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I agree that you fit all the other, um, talking points that we communicated on before. Um, yeah, I'm looking for the space on the property for the berm. Looks like there's some decent space there. We definitely would want to pick something landscaping-wise that would be more CO2.
Yeah, well.
Whatever we did in parcel F.
Here's kind of a thought too, I'm sorry.
So I've had a similar.
I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Since we have a long time before that last section is built, maybe it'd be worthwhile when you do section one to put the berm in and to start putting some of the, the pine trees or spruce trees or whatever.
Bring that dirt over and start creating the berm.
And that way it has a chance to mature by the time you get to that section.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea at all. Yeah, so they're, they're five years old by the time.
Well, you were thinking the same thing. I, I know Craig wasn't, but I wanted to, that, that's why I had to interrupt him.
I believe that's been my comment before that he stalls.
Oh, sorry.
Um, a- as for the siding, I, or, uh, the spacing between the buildings, I get them was, um, understanding that Richard was at the meeting was in agreement with what they communicated on. So it's interesting to hear the, the letter difference. Um, I, I, I understand Mr. Barley's coming from and I have that concept too. I guess I'm interested in wondering, I mean, if it's a safety issue, wouldn't it come up in insurance? And I'm looking at our insurance professionals.
Peter could have answered that question.
Yeah.
Or he would got us to answer.
Well, so, then I guess that kind of goes to my concept and then even, and I'm going to say this is a common sense approach. If it's an issue, it would raise itself as an insurance rate, right? I mean, would that be a, a thought process?
Maybe after the fact.
Right. Well, so I'm going to go back to my own history. When I resided in my house during COVID, I could have done vinyl, but I chose cement siding because it was an insurance benefit. I could have chose either one. I have plenty of feet between, but quite honestly, fiber siding, I did my own, so fiber was easier for me to install as a DIYer than vinyl, the, the tools and the bending and the brakes and all those other tools I don't have. I have a nail gun. And, uh, so that was easier. I didn't see any difference. I looked it up quickly and it does appear to be now a little bit more disparity in price. When I bought my cement siding, it was the same price as vinyl. And that was the color-treated Hardyboard plank style. So there, it was an easy no-brainer. For me, it was the same price and there was an insurance break. And it was easier to install. So all threes were pros on that concept.
Heard of cement siding.
Yeah, James Hardy is the cement siding. It's, uh, very popular, board and battened plank and lap siding. They have a lot of different styles.
Mr. Record, what it can tell you about insurance is all, just like anything else, it's a law of large numbers. So I bet you they would know more than anybody else because they would probably hear how many times these things happen. And they would probably be proactive and say fifteen is not a good number. We better space these out because everybody's complaining about the insurance, so. As far as I know, I've never heard anything about, wow, those are close. Our, our insurance rates are going to be higher than that last one you did. I, I've never heard that.
Yeah, and if they're similar to Queens Park, I mean, I understand what we're allowing is a minimum. But what's a law of averages, which is what we're seeing on Queens Park as to what people want to spend money on, what they want to buy, there's certainly on average more than that. There, you know, uh, I think in a higher percentage, so. I think we gauge that and let insurance, I guess I'm comfortable, let the insurance figure that out.
Um, is that something, as you guys are selling a house, you said it was an option to put the cement, right?
Yeah, if somebody, if somebody's interested in it, we certainly offer it. We're always open to new products. Uh, we've, I, I can't say that we've installed one recently, uh, but it is, it is substantially more money now than vinyl.
And do, and do you ever?
Got a good deal if you got it for the same price. Yeah.
And do you ever showcase that, like, to Mr. Eckert's point? Would, would you come to me if I was looking for a house going, and if you want the cement siding, um, it's going to cost you more, but insurance rates are lower if you have it.
Yeah, um, we do have, we do have a sample of it in our showroom or where we conduct our pre-construction meeting. So yes, it is an option that somebody, uh, could certainly spend money on if they wanted.
My guess is too, is that their supplier is more geared towards the vinyl, which is what they're more accustomed to, so the price is probably more aggressive on that product than what they use minimal of, set of proper statements.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm not so, I'm not sure if they're, they're definitely geared more for it because it's more popular, so they stock more of it. Uh, but Hardyboard is, is something they could bring in and they have some of.
Those are my comments, sir. I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Record.
Pros or cons? Thank you.
Chair will recognize Mr. List.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
You know, I happen to live in a Faber home. I'm not a very big fan of it. It was the only thing that was in the market about ten years ago. Uh, I'm just wondering today is, and my Faber home was built in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety. Um, I find that the quality of the construction is pretty poor. The windows were all builder's grade. I'm just wondering if today's, what is Faber building a better home today than they were thirty years ago? I'd hope the answer will be yes.
I think every, I think any builder that's been in this business this long um, is definitely doing something right and improving their product every year. I have, I was not with Faber in eighty-nine, so I can't speak to the product back then. All I can tell you is that now we use state-of-the-art, uh, we're always looking to innovate. We're always looking for new products that we can offer. Um, the, we use Pella windows, which are a very good window, uh, we use.
Better now than it was, yeah, I think it's.
I don't know. Again, I, I can't speak to what they had. We're using, uh, architectural roofing. We use, uh, 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 floor joint, we use eye joists in some cases. Uh, sometimes it's nominal two by ten or two by twelve, depending on what the architect specs, but, you know, everything we do is state-of-the-art and yes, uh, you know, I would say that our product is a lot better now than it was in eighty-nine.
And will these houses be, will, will there be some energy efficiency, um, built, will that be the buyer's option to do something like geothermal or solar?
Geothermal.
Things like that?
Geothermal is something we're looking at right now. It is, again, that's very costly. Um, with some of the new codes that are being passed, the houses are very efficient as they are now. We have to undergo a blower door test which requires, uh, there's less than three air exchanges per hour. So, you know, the house is closed off, but under negative pressure and that's measured. That's, that's part of the code we have to submit. It has to be by an independent third party. That's something we have to submit to the town for, uh, in order to get a certificate of occupancy. Uh, our furnaces we're using are ninety-six percent efficient plus two-stage furnaces. Geothermal is something we're looking at. I know the state's looking to, um, electrify, so to speak, every all-new construction. Uh, we haven't got to that point yet, but yes, that's something we are looking at and whether it's something we can offer at Riverton, I'm, I can't, can't say.
Vehicle charging stations in someone's home, would that be a buyer's option or is that something that'll be a standard?
That would be so, that would be a buyer's option.
And, um, let's see, when they ask you about a Faber home. Well, let me go to this, the plan. Is there any option in, uh, in phase one to not have a house at one oh one and one twenty-eight at the entrance off of, uh, your station road? I'm just thinking of from a visible, a vision viewpoint as you enter a, a subdivision. And I've seen there is one there near Countess Drive.
Right.
You know, there's such a close proximity to the road, to the corner. I think just visually speaking, it would be.
We actually made those lots wider, the corner lots. We always make them wider.
Eliminating the cor- eliminating those corner lots and using it as a entrance to your subdivision. It's more visually appealing. Like the entrance to my subdivision off, off Stone Road, it's Chestnut Hill. It's a nice open, we have a nice, uh, stone entranceway there with the name. And it just kind of gives you a little bit more of a welcoming appeal. If I was, I, I certainly myself would not buy a, a, a corner house that close to the, an intersection. But that's, that's me.
As Walt said, uh, some people, believe it or not, prefer it. They want to be near the front of the subdivision. Uh, we do do monuments. Uh, we did find in the past though, sometimes with the monuments, the, it becomes an issue, who's going to maintain it afterwards? So we started doing, wh- when we do, we do a monument, we'd make an agreement with whoever buys the house to, um, you know, that, that's going to be coming with it and they're going to be taking care of it. And like Walt said, we did make the house wa- the lot wider so that, uh, there was more space between the house and the main road.
And streetlights, they're, they're given, is that set in this subdivision?
Correct.
No going back on that because I'm not a big, not a big streetlight fan.
Well, that's again preference.
Right.
We think they offer a bit, a little safety.
I like, I'd rather look at the stars. I mean, you know, in addition here, I'm going to listen to the thruway noise here. I may as well work on something else to do.
The, uh, the streetlights actually are something we've been asking for as a town, be, or more or less for safety. Um, especially on the sidewalks and these larger subdivisions that we're plowing at, you know, four, five, six in the morning, you know, in dark and there's kids waiting or walking the bus. Um, you know, the, it's become a conflict.
So again, it's not a requirement though.
Then.
Unless it's not a requirement, right?
Not in all Riverton's in a light district or not, that's a moot point.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. McIntyre. Very good. Uh, anything further from town staff?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Mr. Mastrolla? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion? The chair will make a motion to approve application number PB three, three, we'll be here all night, you guys. PB three, three, two. Do I have a sufficient second, please? That sounds like that's pretty firm to me, right? You, you comfortable with that?
It's, well, I guess up to Dan, but it's a staff comment and yet they have to address all comments, but I would say though, the planning board is the one that's going to stipulate what the setbacks are, so. I, I don't know. What do you think, Dan? You think it's? That's correct. No, not at this point. Correct.
Thirty-five.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion then to, uh, approve application number PB three, three, two. Uh, with conditional, with the condition that it's a seven-point-five foot side setback and thirty-five foot front setback. Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Hey.
Two nays?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, that's, yep. Okay, excuse me. Let's go back a little bit, uh. Chris, we had your comment number two. The conditions as indicated in special use permit twenty, twenty-one dash zero, three, four will be adhered to?
Yes, did we do that, uh, last plan board meeting that we had here? Because this, this came for preliminary about a month ago.
Well, I remember that, uh, one of the things was dust and all that other stuff and I brought that up to him about the, uh, highway, you know, dirt stuff getting in the highway.
Oh, right.
Generated from the site.
Yeah, and that's. That would certainly be covered in those, you know, the storm water pollution prevention and, and enforced by our esteemed, esteemed construction team.
But it just says it has to be in the decision letter, so.
Now, let's take a look here. Sure. I'm looking for the town board seeker requirements or, um, requirements. Well, here's a. Yeah, here it is. There's one extra, the town board resolution that states what the conditions are. Um, the project shall, the, that the project be developed in accordance with the plan submitted as part of the application for the special use permit subject to changes resulting from site plan approval at the town of Henrietta Planning Board, so long as those changes do not contradict the conditions herein. And number two, the project attains all approvals required of the planning board. And number three, in order to mitigate traffic issues at the East River Road corridor as required by the town's finding statement on this topic, that the applicant pay the East River Road corridor seeker mitigation fees covering the project's contribution to the overall corridor traffic mitigation as per the comprehensive land use plan update approved by town board resolution such as the on February twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. In an amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred in accordance with the reference comprehensive land use plan update, such fees shall be paid prior to the issuance of a building permit. So just to summarize in that one, because Kevin and I talked about the secret mitigation fees, is that, um, I think we were going to put money in escrow. And then as that got taken out, then we would release the funds. Um, so we have a.
Right.
Plan.
For section, that's for life.
Uh, there's, there's two more conditions. Uh, number four, uh, duly completing real property transactions subject to further town board approval in relative, relative to a certain strip of town-owned lands utilized to assess the Riverton Golf Course lands, which now run through the property, such that the town will transfer said lands to the developer in exchange for the developer transferring to the town lands generally bordering on the western portion of the property for potential use by the town as a walking trail. And in connection therewith, the provision of sidewalks with the development, within the development at the sole cost of the developer, such that access to the Riverton Golf Course through the property will continue to be preserved. So basically that is we're swapping land. There's a right of way that, or town, right of way that we're going to transfer to them and we're going to take a strip along, a strip of land along the golf course.
Now, Chris, do I have to include all of that in today's minutes? Now, Chris, do I have to include all of that in today's minutes?
I don't, I mean. Is it, this is all part of a special permit approval?
Yeah, this is part of the special use permit application. Yes.
Okay, so why don't we just do?
You can reference.
Knowing that the planning board is not modifying any conditions of the town board's special permit. That way, because you started out with, maybe the planning board could, could alter something and we're not. So if a special permit is much more enforceable than a site plan approval.
Yeah, and there is one more, if everybody wants to hear it. The developer will create new sidewalks at the developer's sole cost from at or about the southernmost point of intersection of the property with Scottsville West Henrietta Road, along the west side of Scottsville West Henrietta Road to the intersection of East Erie Station Road with Countess Drive, which we've already talked about and we've agreed to do.
So I would leave it that the, the planning board has not made or suggested any modifications to any prior approvals or special permits issued by the town board. Is that agreeable to the applicant?
Yes.
And we did have a conversation, and this might not even be in that, but the access to Riverton for the town. That, that's separate from what was just said there. We have that set aside?
Yes, so there's a, an access that they're providing off the main, the new road that'll go back into the golf course.
Okay, so to recap then, so the chairs proposing a motion on application number PB three-three-two to approve with the condition of seven-point-five-foot setbacks, side setbacks and a thirty-five-foot front setback. Correct? Okay, and Mr. Borkowski, you still wish the second? Thank you, okay.
You can just throw in there, and noting that the planning board is not fashion modified any conditions or approvals.
Fair enough. Good job, Mrs. Brill.
Got it.
Okay, discussion, clarification? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So Mr. Barley and Mr. List. Okay, in the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it and the motion carries. Gentlemen, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for your patience this evening.
Yes, you're welcome. Have a good one. We'll see you in a couple of months for finally.
Okay, sounds good. Last item, discussion item on Riverton parcel E. Planning board is to consider granting a six-month extension of time for application number two-one dash zero zero five located at Scottsville West Henrietta Road in a planned unit development zone district. So this will be the apartments, right, Chris? Moore Road and Scottsville West Henrietta, kinda behind Drummond Square there.
Yep, is Jess, is Jess on or?
Nobody's, nobody's been on.
Okay, yeah, so I can address this then. So basically, they're asking for a six-month extension. They're trying to get their funding together and, you know, quite honestly, the construction cost have rose significantly. So they're, you know, trying to get the funding for it.
Okay, very good. Any discussion?
And this prevents them from having to pay a new application fee?
Yeah, no, no, no.
They're not proposing any changes to the site plan.
Nope, not at all.
Yeah, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Mr. Record, thank you.
Second.
Who had the second?
Barley.
Mr. Barley, okay, very good. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Eight thirty-five? Thirty-four?